We'll get started, we'll call the meeting's order, we'll start the presidential meetings. Alright, so Norton Media and Norton Public Schools are recording, just to let you know if anybody else is, they need to know that upfront. Thank you all for coming, we're gonna start with the minutes from February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four open session. You guys had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Any comments, concerns, questions? And I'm hoping to approve the minutes from this February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. The second, sort of, I was in favor.
Alright.
And then the executive session minutes, the twenty, February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, anything on that? I'm hoping to approve the minutes, second, I was in favor, alright. Alright, next is me, so I have reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, three hundred eighty seven thousand, two hundred fifty nine dollars and one cent, and school payroll warrants, February twenty second, twenty twenty four, one million, two hundred and twenty two thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars and forty cents, I wish to enter them into public register. Student wrap updates, hey guys.
Hi.
How are ya?
Good.
Yeah, alright, so student, from the YELLS, students are getting ready for recess, are getting outside for recess now that the rain has ended, and they love getting on the turf field and playing all types of games and activities, they're also getting outside during class time for experiments, during PE wellness for other outdoor activities. We are currently engaged in our ST Math March Mathness Tournament, where all fifteen homerooms are matched up against one another in a bracketed tournament competition. We're looking for each student to do sixty required puzzles per week, with the class, with the better percentages moving on to the next round. The first round has homerooms from fifth grade versus fourth grade, we will let you know who is crowned the ST Math March Mathness Champion after a few weeks of competition, students are excited for our HAPTO upcoming music bingo night, one of the best times of the year, also here with our HAPTO book fair, which begins next week during the parent teacher conferences. Students come down as a class to the fair and hang out during the conferences to print out books, pick out books. We hope to see as many parents as we can during parent teacher conferences next week.
Alright, and so for the JCS, they are looking forward to the warmer weather and all that it brings, and they asked the students this morning what they were looking forward to, and we have some responses. So Autumn said, I have to swim in the cold and hot.
Um.
Anna said, more playing outside because it's been cold forever, playing on screens is no fun. Colton said, going outside more to play basketball and soccer. And Noah said, going swimming. And Miss Frederick's class in unison said, more recess. And the first grader said, getting to plant more sunflowers for the garden. And nearly every other student, K through three, all said getting to play outside.
And then from the high school, the past few weeks, we have seen a lot of cool things happen at the high school in the past few weeks. National Honor Society traveled to elementary schools to run full science events for Science Days, and National Honor Society traveled to elementary schools for your Costa America Day. Yesterday was the teacher versus student, well, faculty-student volleyball tournament, it was very successful, Mr NHS. Matt Williams won Mr NHS last night, if you weren't there, it was interesting. Last temperatures warm, people are very excited about all things spring, including the spring musical, high school musical, which is the first weekend in April, spring sports, and eating much outside. That's all we have for you guys tonight.
Thank you guys. Do we have anything? Alright, update is what if necessary on the Norton DFW carnival, Gary, get up. You think I don't know that?
I just wanna make sure we're all aboard. White case and everything, and if everything's okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna, it's gonna be June nineteenth to the twenty third. So, if there's any questions, the last day, we're gonna have a car show from ten to two, all the carnivals going on. We're using the same vendor for the carnival this year as we did last year, didn't have any issues with them staying across the road in the parking lot of the party.
And same setups, so Thursday, you're starting like in the afternoon, they're starting setup in the afternoon, is that correct, and then Friday, you guys are available?
Yeah, yes, so actually, we're gonna start on Wednesday this year.
Oh, Wednesday, okay.
So it's gonna start on Wednesday and go through Sunday, so probably five days, the nineteenth to the twenty third, yeah.
Was that an extra day than last year?
Yeah, we lost a day last year to the weather, and we're trying to build in another day this year, just in case we have fun with weather again, if we can get a, tell it gets any, and.
It'll be a great way for kids to start vacation, so.
So let's say, we're out of school then, that's up right now.
Yes, so as of right now, the last day is Thursday, June thirteenth, which actually works out really well. I met earlier this fall with Mr Cameron, and we looked at the school calendar, and it was, it was a great partnership to make sure that we were using dates that worked for everybody, so school will be out at that point, and they'll have a lot of availability and room to set everything up.
I'm gonna get a hold of town manager, it's yours, we'll have a meeting with them too, and you people be invited, you know, get that out of the way, all settled.
I think if it's going out, and that.
That doesn't go on the turf fields, but just mark them on that. What about behind the school, they, you guys haven't used that either, so it's just that where like, solar panels aren't?
And the grass area in front of, uh.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, the by is where the garden's at, yeah. Wait, jinx it down.
And last year, we moved the buses to another parking lot at Liddley Wood to the middle school, those three years.
Yeah, we're hoping to do that again this year.
Yeah, it should be, it'd be hot at that point, it'd go.
Yeah, they probably couldn't have set up a, they have to school, they know, I bet, you know.
They're probably watching over our mini buses.
Yeah, the mini buses were a little bit of an issue last year, but if we're out of school by then, I don't think it'll be an issue this year. Just talk to them, thank you very much for, you know, welcoming, welcoming guests, excuse me, and voting on it, giving us the okay.
You're always welcome, yeah, you guys are always welcome, yeah.
That's right, and Gary, I'm looking forward to the carnival, I'm looking forward to the carnival.
So I don't think, I don't think, huh? I don't, um, I don't think we have to vote, right, because we already voted for this. So you guys are set to go, I know you just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, which we are. Yeah, wish you a lot of luck with it, and hopefully it's a huge success.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Alright, so next up, we have recognition of Mr Malawa. Hey, Mr Malawa, line up. Right beside him. Right there. So earlier this year, members of the Massachusetts School Administrators Association came and visited the Yale School to officially recognize and honor Mr Malawa as the twenty twenty four Massachusetts School Assistant Principal of the Year. This prestigious recognition highlights Mr Malawa's outstanding contribution and leadership in the field of education. Mr Malawa has been with us here in Norton since nineteen ninety eight, and spent, I would say, what, more than fifteen or sixteen years as a classroom teacher at JCS? And then also at the Yale School before transitioning into the role of Dean of Students in two thousand and fourteen. For those of you who are not sure what the Dean of Students does, it is really the role of an assistant principal within our, the Yale School, and he works side by side with Mr Gagan every day to make sure that students have everything that they need to learn safely in our schools, and does a ton of work with our staff in looking at the behavior initiative, PIS, and making sure that all of our students have a welcoming and safe school, so it's really such an honor, not just for Mr Malawa, but really for the town of Norton and Norton Public Schools to have him recognized in this way. And we're just so thankful that he is, is ours. Mr Gagan, I know is here as well, do you wanna say anything, Mr Gagan?
Oh, sure, sure. Uh, so I've worked with Bob now for six years, and Bob, I nominated him, and Bob is really wonderful. As Dr O'Neil said, he does everything for me as a principal, he is really a co-principal when it comes down to it, and he does an amazing job with the kids, with families, with the staff. He and I teach a RTI block together, so kids come during their LLT time, and we teach together, fourth and fifth grade math and ELA, and it's just, it's awesome, I can depend on him, and I know that things are gonna get done, and he's just a wonderful educator, the best that I've ever worked. Put a three on it.
Oh, man, I just, I just wanna thank Sardine, he's been awesome, I mean, he's a great person to work with, best I've worked with, Dr O'Neil, Dr Akzin, the staff, I couldn't have done it without the staff at school, they are phenomenal. For the students, we're all in for the students pretty great, we really are. I live forty five minutes away, you're known because I love everything about the kids and the staff, and so, it's great.
Thank you. Nice job, good job. You have to go into the budget hearing, but I'm gonna walk in there with my, so I can hear this one you're doing. Yes, I'm still there. So we're going to go into the, um, on the twenty 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 five school budget, so is there a motion to open the public hearing? For a second?
Sure.
I was on paper, we need to do a roll call, so, um, yeah.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Justine? And I, and myself, I mean, yes as well.
Sure, I'm just, I'm, we are, back to the general section.
Okay, we got one back in the general section. And now, I'm just following my orders here. And you know, we're all learning essential, I forget this year, so thank you everyone for joining us tonight for the FY twenty five budget hearing. I would say this is probably the most people we've had at a school committee meeting in the last, probably this year, so thank you all for coming. I'm going to throw a few slides to kind of talk about how we arrived at this number, this recommendation that we have, and also give everyone in the room some updated information that we just received today. So I think it's always very important to start with our core beliefs. So in Norton, we believe that students belong in a safe, inclusive, collaborative learning environment. We believe that students belong in learning environments where they have access to free appropriate curriculum and instruction. And we also believe that students belong in a learning environment where they are able to receive differentiated and just-in-time interventions. And that's a lot of the work that we've done over these last few years with our INTSS initiatives. All of the work that we've done and all the time that we've spent, whether it's during staff meetings, professional development, looking at student data, has been towards these goals. This is our current enrollment as of October first. District students, we have two thousand one hundred and sixty-six students that are here enrolled in Norton Public Schools that are Norton students. As of October first, we had two hundred and fifty-two school choice students. We have thirty-nine students that are enrolled in our RESE, STEM, and Heart Period Program, and they use our schools for their program. And then we had twenty-nine students that were placed out of district through special education programs. Since September, I have been talking and sharing information with the school committee, with our school community, about the goal of a level service budget for this upcoming year. A level service budget means that we would retain the exact staffing, program, services that we have during this current year. It is a financial increase when you speak about level services because costs go up from year to year. So, I apologize because I'm getting old and my site is not what it used to be. Our current FY twenty four budget is thirty-four million, seven hundred and six thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars, and our proposed budget for the FY twenty-five school year for level services is a twelve percent increase, thirty-eight million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. It's important for everyone in this room to hear me say again, this increase of four point one million dollars represents a few different things. Previously, we had Essar grant funds, which came from COVID relief grants that were all given to us over these last few years. And what we did was we used a lot of those funds in order to either hire new staff or to retain staff over these last several years. During our current budget, we spent five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Essar funds to employ staff members. So unfortunately, with that money going away, we now, in order to retain level services, we need to add that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our budget itself. You'll also hear the school committee and our administrative team talk a lot about mandated education services versus the general education services. Manded education includes special education, the service, the staff, also out-of-district placements for our students. It also includes education and support for our students that are English language learners, that are working on their English language proficiency, as well as translation services for those families, and also homeless transportation. That is something that we are required by state law to make sure that we are transporting our students that may be without homes at this time to their school of origin, so if they were originally a Norton student, and now they may be living in Taunton, it is our responsibility as a school district to bring that child to school here in Norton. Vice versa, if a student is living here in Norton and their school of origin may have been in Nottingham, we also need to work with the towns to make sure that we are getting our students to school, so that is actually a large percentage. When we take a look at the increases over our FY twenty four budget, currently, the mandated education is about thirteen million dollars. For our FY twenty-five, we are projecting it to be about fifteen million dollars, which is a total of a fifteen point six percent increase on that area of service itself. For general education, it's twenty-one point six million for this year. Our request is twenty-three point eight million, which is a nine point eight percent increase on those line items. This information has been shared over and over again, and I think it's really important, and I just apologize that it's very small state, but it walks our community through how we got there, because I think it's really important for everyone to see how you start with a number and how those line items add up as you go along. Otherwise, it's very confusing, you say, four million dollars, where did that come from? So I'm gonna give you a very brief overview, two point six million dollars is salaries and contractual obligations. As I mentioned when I first started, that's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're reducing previously as part of Essar, that's included in that. We have to make sure we're adding that money back in. We are looking at almost seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of increased cost to special education, they said they're out of district. And it's important for our community to know that this seven hundred and seventy-two thousand is actually not the whole cost. The district is reimbursed a percentage from something at the state called Circuit Breaker. So therefore, our tuitions are actually going up over a million dollars. But the cost to Norton Public Schools will be about seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. Additionally, an increase of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of transportation to our out-of-district placements for our students. Transportation these days is extremely expensive, and it's a very competitive, um. Thank you, my brain is just very tired, it's a very competitive market, you do not get a lot of bids for transportation. So you're, we're pretty much stuck with the prices that they give us, it's extremely difficult to negotiate. Within the district, we have increases to special education programming, that could be student needs in terms of specific crash materials, it could be curriculum materials, it could be just a different type of programming than they were receiving originally. Or it could be students that are now moving in to the district and are going or aging up, they may have turned three and are now eligible for special education. All of those things are included there. This year, as I mentioned, transportation is really a tough market, we are actually going out to bid for another contract with our local transportation service. We use Bloom currently, and what will happen is we will get probably three or four other companies that are interested in learning more about our process, taking a look at our bid, and most often, when we get to the day where we open our bids, there's only one. And so it's very difficult to go through a bid process and make it a competitive venture when there are only one, there's only one company returning that. We have an increase of fifty thousand dollars for homeless transportation, increase in operations and management, that is the day-to-day. So toilet paper, cleaning materials, paper towels, making sure that our elevators are safe and able to run on a daily basis, making sure that our cameras are working when we need them to be, keeping our schools safe and clean. And then what we always do is we always add a contingency for unanticipated special education costs. We have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in there, and that really is the cost of one student that may be going to an out-of-district placement, and one student that may be going to a collaborative. And every single year, without a doubt, we always use that contingency and then more. It's very, very difficult for us to budget for special education needs for students because we never know what is going to pop up through the course of the year. So that's how you get from the thirty-four million dollars where we're starting this year to our twelve percent increase. I think it's really important, and this is something we never, ever talk about, is unfunded requests. Every single year, I have been in Norton for, it's my twenty-first year in Norton, and I have been an administrator in central office, this is my thirteenth year, in, in a central office role. And every year, our team comes to the table and says, wouldn't it be great if we could have? Or, you know, our kindergartners really need some extra support, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could have kindergarten, paraprofessional at the most classroom? So I think it's really important for our community to know that the budget that we are putting forward is level service. It does not include any of those extra, really would be nice to have. So these are actual, really legitimate and justifiable needs that are coming from our principals, our department heads, our teachers, things that we could use in our schools, but they are not included in our budget. It's actually a six hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase if we were to be asking for these additional positions. So things like an adjustment counselor here at the middle school for our RICH program, kindergarten, paraprofessionals to just be a half-time support in our classrooms with some of our youngest learners. Last year, we had to cut a fifth grade teacher at the Yale, this, we were hoping to reinstate that position this year. Same thing at the high school, we cut a math teacher and an ELA teacher, we were hoping to reinstate those positions. So this is something that we typically don't share with the community, but I think it's really important for people to know that there are things that we aren't asking, and really would benefit, so.
Dr O'Neil?
Yes.
This library media specialist, how many years has that been asked for or recommended? And keep me honest, this is the only school that doesn't have staff for the library, that's all it.
Okay, Mrs Winstorf's saying that she's been asking for a library media specialist for the last eight years, I was actually gonna say, probably closer to ten, Mrs Winstorf. Our libraries were closed in two thousand and seven, in two thousand and seven, we actually received a negative increase that year in our budget, our, our allocation went down from one year to the next, and then in two thousand and eight, we actually received a zero. So our libraries were closed as part of those budget cuts at that time, all except for Norton High School, because a librarian is a recommendation from me asked as part of the accreditation process. So probably, I'd say, it's been a year or two, they were covered in plastic, and you would just walk through the buildings and they were all covered up. We have been very fortunate that at one point, our parent volunteers went to the superintendent and said, please let us help you, let us run the libraries for, just so students can come and pick out a book. And that's what we did for many, many years, the students were able to go into the libraries at the elementary schools and here at Norton Middle School, come in with their class, maybe twenty minutes, once a week or once every other week, and just choose a book and to take it and read it. We have had Mrs Durmas at JCS, I'd say probably six or seven years. And the way that we brought that position is we used to have elementary Spanish, and the Spanish teacher ended up taking another role within the district, you couldn't find someone to do a point four, point six Spanish mission. So we ghosted the library, and we found Mrs Durmas, who started just working at JCS and LGN to provide that teacher preparation time. And over the years, we've been able to increase her a little bit at a time, so now she is actually traveling between the three elementary libraries, two days at JCS, two days at LGN, and one at the Yale for students to get library classes. And this library is run by a fabulous parent volunteer, but it does not have certified library specialist here. So that is definitely something that's been asked for for a very long, long story short, it needs to be real, the history on that one. Um. Yes, yeah. So those are some of the important things, earlier today, I met with Mr Unitz, our town manager, to talk about some of the challenges that we're having, and looking at the projections that we have, the receipts that are coming in from, you know, town hall, and then our, as a community, the fixed costs that we have around health insurance, retirement benefits, all of those things, we're actually looking at a deficit for the upcoming school year. So instead of, we've been talking about level services, level services, we want to have the same things we have now. Now we're going and we're talking, we're not even talking about level funding. So this is extremely detrimental to the budgeting process for Norton. So just to be clear, this just happened today, yes, the meeting with the town manager, so we thought we were gonna expect X, and now we are looking at way below, yes, X, I just wanna make sure everybody is clear of what just took place today.
I actually, I didn't hear anybody gasp, so I, I'm not sure if people understand the problem.
So we, this would be, we would be receiving less money for our schools this coming year than we are receiving right now. So you forget the twelve percent, is what you're saying. So there's no twelve percent.
Essentially, it's a negative percentage.
So it's a negative percentage, so I, I think it's really important, I want to say that Mr Unitz is sharing this information with us left for tonight. I shared this information with the school committee today, because that is my responsibility as a superintendent, is to make sure that they have the information that they need coming into this meeting and to not be blindsided. This is a very beginning conversation, I asked questions this afternoon, I sent Mr Unitz an email, what do we have in free cash? What do we have in stabilization? What are, what do we have in some of those other accounts that we've been able to draw from in the past? Is there any wiggle room here, and I'm waiting for some of those answers. As a school district, we don't have a lot of wiggle room left in our revolving accounts, because we've been using them year over year to help to close the gaps that we have. So if we were not, if for some reason, we were not able to use our funds, we would be looking at a deficit of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars less than what our budget is right now. Which when we think about level services, I've been talking about that twelve percent number, we would need to cut four point five million from our level service number in order to open our doors in September. And so just to be clear, all the work that has gone into, let's say, eight hours ago, yeah, all the work from our admin team, from us sitting down and talking about what this is gonna look like going forward, what we're gonna do, that was all just taken, shaken, and thrown up in the air. In a sense, yes, I, I would say, you do not want to, but it's exactly what just happened. And we just all found out about it because our superintendent is very clear in communicating with us immediately when we find out things like this. But that's.
Yeah, it's hard, um. So I wanted to give people a sense of how to wrap their heads around this, because sometimes you look at the numbers and you say, oh, it's four point five million, what does that mean, et cetera. So the way that the budget is set up, we, we break it into two pieces, we break it into our special ed component and our general education. As special ed, by law, is basically mandated to be covered. So the special ed increase for us is five, five something, I think, and the general education gives six, seven something percent.
It was fifteen and six, on that one.
It's actually not even relevant what they were, our increase is twelve percent. The special education is gonna have to be met, so the way to wrap your head around this is to say, general education from level services will be cut by twelve percent. So we will cut twelve percent of the services we have from last year to next, or, sorry, this year to next. That's, that's what this means as we stand right now. There's no other way to say it's, it's draconian, I mean, this is. There's no other way to say it's draconian. I mean, this is a huge, huge blow. It's, it's gonna make for a potentially very bad year next year. There's, there's absolutely no way to sugarcoat that. I wish I could sit here and say, hey, don't worry. You should worry. But honestly, you should worry.
And, you know, our team and the school committee has spent countless hours looking at, because we knew twelve percent was probably a long shot. We've been looking, right, I mean, right, let's go, wait it, wait it. But we look at, hey, what if we got five percent? What would those cuts look like? What if we got four percent? What would those cuts look like? And we have spent a lot of time looking at our program, looking at staffing, looking at ways that we could make this work and not with the least impact to students. And up until eight hours ago, approximately, we really thought, we really thought we were at four percent. And it wasn't a brick, I mean, don't get me wrong, it was gonna hurt. That plan was going to hurt, but to add another one point seven million dollars on top of all of that, that's another fifteen teaching positions over and above the twenty nine we had already discussed.
So I, I kinda wanna just touch a little bit for what Mrs. Sevass said. We look at our budget as, as we run the budget for the school department. We are one of twenty departments in the town that receive money. We think, you know, we have an idea of what our budget should be, twelve percent. We knew pretty much right off the bat, that's, that's, that's a dream scenario. What we wrote on is what we think our needs are. But we don't get our final number until in comm, we have different departments, till the voters at town meeting decide what their, their choices are. So, you know, again, I, I think collectively, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but I think we're all, you know, shaking our heads for the last, call it six hours when we received this information. It's, it's been a long process to process just in this, and, and we all have had multiple meetings where we know there's gonna be significant cuts. I think, I, I think anything over five is significant, and we were at twenty eight at that point. And it's, now it's going to be a lot more than twenty eight if everything stays the same. To Mr. Sevass's point, it's, it's time to worry. I think, in my opinion, it's time to worry. You said fifteen?
Additional fifteen. Forty-four. So I think we're twenty-nine, I don't know, fifteen, forty-four. I, I don't know where you get those kind of positions from. And then that's really looking at our items as well. And I think it's going to require our team to sit down and really look at things. It's going to require the school committee and, you know, to talk about what our priorities need to be. I think it's important to recognize that there is a perception in our community that we always save the day. Right? I've been here for twenty years, I, I know that. You can't save the day from a four point five million dollar cut. Like, you don't, that money does not exist. There is no way that we can, you know, have a few people retire and a couple kids move out of district and we, and we save the day. It's, it's not possible. And I hate to be the person to have to say that. We will sit here probably in a month's time as five volunteers become the most hated people in the state for things that we have to do. It is terrible. Please understand, bringing kids to the meeting, it can't help, can't help. We can cry along with them. It cannot help at this point. This is bad. We will become hated people and we are here neighbors. We have worked, some of us have been here fifteen years, you know, nine years, like this, we volunteered. You know, when our kids were in preschool, this is that. We've been saying this day was coming. People chose not to listen. Here we are. So please understand in the next month how difficult it is to sit in these seats. Please understand.
I'll, I'll, I'll pre-clarify a little, of, of what Dan and Sherry are saying. I think it's important that people understand, but we, we're putting this forward as if we're voting on budget. But kind of to dance by, that's actually not what we're doing. This is just a transparent, hey, level services, this is what we would need to fund that. There is no budget. Nobody gets a budget until the citizens of this town sit down and vote the budget through. That's the budget. That's the only thing that matters. No disrespect to FinCom, the, or Selectmen, or to us, what we all say does not matter. Towns is down and votes on it. Reality is, we don't have enough money to fund all of this. So that's, it is what it is. Sherry's right, you know, people are gonna get angry at us. They're gonna say, how dare you ask for that? I'm asking for it. This is just a transparent admission of this is what it costs to run this district. The town will decide what it wants to do. So Sherry's right, you know, we, listen, we've been saying this for years. I, I've been saying it for at least a decade that we are heading down tracks to a really bad spot. And I said these guys earlier, I said, the second worst thing in the world you can do is to tell people there's a disaster coming. The worst thing you can do is to be right. People are gonna be angry about this. I mean, it is what it is, though. Another thing I always say, not your enemy, math is your enemy. It's that, as simple as that. If you have five dollars, you have five dollars to cover it. But five dollars, forty years.
Not mathematics.
If you don't have the money to cover your expenses, it is what it is, so. It's, and, and listen, I, I, we made cuts last year. We, we make a lot of cuts that people never know about. Say you saved the day. Well, we didn't really save the day, we just, we cut services and nobody noticed it because it was a little here, a little there. And if it's further over school district, it seems like, wow, things are pretty much the same. Maybe it might be getting better. But they're slowly eroding. They've been slowly eroding for a long time. A few meetings back, I just, we were talking about back in the nap that I just kinda did projections, okay. This is, you know, sped budgets going like this, we're doing this to this budget. At what point does this, you know, this kinda collapse? I think I said like ten years or something like that. Was, ten years from now, we're not gonna have any money in general education budget. That, that's what the projection is right now. And that wasn't even all the bits. That was off of actually much rosier, no, but it's quite a lot. So, you know, I mean, I get it, people are gonna be pissed about it, but this is, this is where we're at as a town. This is not the school committee's doing. It's not what Selectmen's doing. It's simply, this is, this is where Norton is right now. It's, it's the financial reality. And we can be angry about it, we can, you know, we can shake our fists at clouds. It's not gonna change it. It isn't. I, I think that's the other thing to note is, we've, I say, we, the school department has gone through these motions for a few months. We don't know what the impact to town services is going to be because they don't, they haven't had a budget workshop, they haven't had this level of depth of what it looks like. So we don't know how this affects our partners on the town side. We can only speak for the schools with the numbers we're given. This could be catastrophic on the town side as well, but we don't know yet. So, I mean, there's not much else we can really say that we haven't said in the last, you know, four or five meetings at this point. This is always, I, I mean, in my mind is, I think this is the most talked about budget number of meetings that I've never been a part of. And, you know, we, we're in the situation we're in for a variety of reasons. Norton has to choose what, what the future wants to be. And, you know, we're all citizens, we're all voters. The voters and the townspeople need to figure out what they want to become, not what we are. The last thing I'll say on this, before we open, I should just say, assume we're doing that.
I think we have to, because it's there.
Yeah, and then that's the last thing I'll say, I don't think there's any, any comments, but understand that this is something, this is very, very new to us. Not the process, the, the numbers. We just found this out today, and I think a lot of us are kinda still digesting it. We don't know that these are the final, final numbers. These things are always in flux. I mean, sometimes we're up until the day of town meeting.
Yeah.
But, but this is a big, this is a big one. I mean, I don't think this is a, oh, no, we, you know what, we found four million dollars. Like, that's, that's not happening. So just keep in mind that, you know, we're, we're still kinda digesting this as well from our side, so. I, I think we're not really a hundred percent sure yet what it will mean to us, but it will mean cuts.
In my eight years, I've never seen anything like this happen. I don't know, in your.
Fifteen years, I've fifteen years. I thought the one where we, we were talking about going pay to fight export. I thought that was the worst thing I've ever seen. And this is fighting exports.
Yeah.
I think this is the worst added up of all my nine years here. And it could be, yeah. And like, like Dan says, it's always like a little bit here, one program here, one program here. Largely under the radar, and then, so we, I mean, we don't know what it's going to look like. You know, we, we have, we have to take a vote, we have to have everything in on time. We will do that process, we will follow the process as we are mandated to do, but we, we will get our number and we like to work within our number.
We're at first year collusion. Sorry, it's been so hard. Today, Mr. Cersei said, it can't get worse. And I said, I think they just stopped saying that. It does. But let's stop saying that. Leave it to Vinnie, he'll always make us laugh.
Oh, me too.
All right, so I guess we're gonna wrap it up to questions.
Hi.
So I think we just need name and address.
Alexia has, I've been at Robin's circle, meaning like the actual.
Thank you.
Okay, technically, yes. Oh, to Robin's circle, unit two, Norton. I'm from Pennsylvania. I've lived in this town for one year. So you guys probably maybe have thought of these things. Have you reached out to any grants from the state or federal level? And also, something we do in Pennsylvania to help offset the cost from special ed is actually any student who's eligible gets Medicaid insurance and then bill insurance, yeah, as you guys already do.
Yeah. In the budget book, which will be, once the budget number is finalized and voted on by the committee, it will go right onto our website, there is a whole page that talks about grants and revolving accounts. So there are a number of federal and state grants that we receive that are entitlement grants. So Title I, I D A, those are grants that we receive every year based on our student population. I wrote the Title I, all those asset grants for a number of years, Dr. Ackerman does now. Mr. Cersei does all of the special education grants. And it's, also on that page will show you the exact number of staff we pay for with those grants. So I hope that's helpful for our community to see how we do offset. We've also been involved in a number of competitive grants over the last couple of years. Mr. Cersei and I wrote a S E L grant, which we were able to, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we were able to purchase our district's S E L curriculum, we were able to pay for more P V I S training, we were able to buy an S E L screener. So we wouldn't have any of those things without those grants. But Norton is also in a very unique position of being a suburban community. We're not extremely diverse. We don't have a large number of high-needs families or low-income families. So it's often, when you look at those competitive grants, we don't qualify as a community, which makes it difficult too. Because we have a lot of the same problems as, as some of the others. But thank you.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that always comes up, I think, and as you probably know, with this is, Norton's considered a rent-to-pay community. So our median income's very high, whether or not we believe it or not, you know. But that's the problem when it comes to some of these grants. And, and what we've seen the last couple of years is we've seen the one-time, you know, grants because of the pandemic. You know, they were one-time, bail everybody, all type of thing. But we're seeing a lot, some of the grants are just drying up. They're not being funded at the state or federal level. You know, it's different changes in administration, different visions for different politicians, you know. Unfortunately, I mean, you know, education is very public. But the problem with that is, nobody wants to show the public what education truly means financing. That's the, that's the biggest problem at the state and federal level.
Do you have anything else?
I think just to piggyback off of what Dan's saying, with politicians and whatnot, I reached out to our state reps, our state senator, and our congressman to D C, trying to get an open forum with them around open district placements, school choice dollars, mandated education that we have no funding for. And it's met with a, ooh, yeah, we know about that, but it's nothing we can really do. Which is a problem, you know, I've said it multiple times, Norton's getting thirty dollars per kid, Marcus is getting twelve hundred from state fund. So it, it turns into an issue that we've always had in this town from a standpoint of we only have so much and everything is riding on your backs as taxpayers and our backs as taxpayers. You know, we don't have the commercial real estate like Mansfield does or Foxborough does, you know? So we're getting to a point now where unfortunately, you know, when we had these asset grants and everything else, we kinda, basically COVID saved our bucks. I mean, it's that simple. COVID and the three hedge funds financially saved our bucks, you know? Now what's happened is those, those are gonna be alright, and we're incorporating them into the budget. That was free money essentially from us in terms of getting it from the federal government. Now that money's riding on your back. It's, it's, it's not a overly complicated system. It's complicated because unfortunately, the state government and how the state branch does them, they, they don't, they don't care about the kids' education. They don't. It's a dollar in games. It's all a game around public education to begin with. You have a Desi board who's unelected, they're all appointed, right there, she'll tell you, right there alone, it's all government crap that gets involved in your kids' education. And unfortunately, this is what it's tripled out to. And it's, trust me, it's going to keep getting worse before it gets better.
That's my, my publicist will kindly thank it on camera. Hi, I'm Joe Spurley, I'm associate executive director, president of Norton Teachers Association. Thank you very much for this. I think that I don't necessarily have a question as much as, I can phrase it in question like jeopardy. So, I'll charge you eight hundred dollars. Okay. I think that it's important just, and I need you guys to speak into this, but I think it's important to say that things are not great now. Right? And I'm not sure that people outside of the buildings have a full understanding of that. You're absolutely right when you say that people don't necessarily notice the cuts because they have little places here, little places there. When I think just in my time here, what we had that we don't have anymore, a librarian, I think is a big deal. The shelves, like just look at the shelves behind me. When I started here, most of these shelves were full. Home ec is gone. Power language to our sixth and seventh graders is gone. There are, and, and there are a lot of other things, there are many other things in all the other buildings. And I think that for a lot of people who maybe aren't involved in school, they follow, you know, this kinda maxim, you know, you have to just have to do more with less. And that economics kinda works at your kitchen table. We all do it, right? We say, oh, I can't take that vacation this year, so we're gonna spend a few days at the, on the heat. Or, like, I can't shop there anymore, I have to shop at, like, Aldi. And, you know, like, save some money, but we all do that. I do that. But there's no, like, you can get a can of beets at Aldi, that's probably pretty good. There's no Aldi, like, adjustment counselor. Like this, like this, like, this, this, there's no, like.
No discount two checks.
No discount teaching, no. And like, these services are so important. And, you know, something, one of my colleagues, I mentioned this in a meeting earlier this week. So I'm so those of you there, I'm sorry I'm repeating myself, but one of my colleagues said to me this week, and I thought it was so powerful, her students also attend school here, and she just said to me, I'm so sad that the things I was able to give my students, my kids, I'm gonna get when they come to the system. And so I really hope that you will approve a level funded budget. I know that for, financially, why you might not want to do that, but I think sending that message so people see, like, this is really what we need. And not just what we need, but what the community deserves. Yeah, so please, please. Just, so I have been here, this is eighteen years. And it, and it is, I'm not know, it's a wonderful place, and I watch every day. The people that I work with just do such amazing things. And I think that to, like, to think of some of the cuts that we're talking about and to think of what that would do to the experience of a student, you know, graduating from Norton High School by ten years from now, a triple down the spectrum, makes us all really sad. So thank you for the work you're doing. I'm gonna advocate for passing a level budget. I think that those conversations, of course, have a lot of people need to see what we need to give our students what they deserve.
Okay, I think.
I just wanna request, I guess, a question about passing.
I, I just want to request, uh, I guess request about passing a level services budget. That, that's actually, we've, I've done that for quite a while. I, I can't remember when. Jen, you, you were happy about the administration when we decided to start creating a budget as it really was.
Yes.
Pretend it was less than it was. So we've actually been requesting level service for quite a while.
Yeah, in some years, it would be a level service plus a couple positions.
Correct.
Um, this is truly like.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So we've, we've been doing it.
Yes, we've been doing it for real.
Yeah, we, we, we always, for, for the last decade, basically, we've been presenting where our true needs were and, and allow the town to make those decisions as we've done before. Uh, and, and I, I get the idea of sending a message. My, my question is, or I guess my, my, I, I wonder if anybody's listening to the, to the message. And I, and I think we've gone a lot of years where people haven't listened to the message. And when you think about those cuts, you know, when we made a cut here, a cut there, a cut there, it seems really innocuous at first. It's like, ah, it's not a big deal. And people kind of get used to that. They get used to the idea of a cut here, a cut there, a cut there. And I didn't really notice it, so cuts are kind of okay. So I think we've kind of gotten the mindset of cuts are, cuts are okay. And, uh, you know, I think they hit them on the head before. We were gonna be at this cliff three years ago, if I remember us. And surprise, COVID, and all of a sudden it was like, wow, we actually got stayed execution. Uh, and that, and I'm not happy about that, but it is what it is. So we got stayed execution, we're kind of through that now, SFR's gone. And we never really got away from that cliff. We were just standing at the edge of it. You know, instead of, so moving towards it, we stopped right at the cliff. And everybody's like, "Yeah, they're fine, they're fine." Well, here's the cliff, and here we go, about to, we're about to go off of it. So, and I'm not trying to be, I mean, algorithmatic. Um, I don't know, there's, I don't see anybody here who was in, um, the JCS, about when I was the, the rep for that or whatever. But, um, you know, but I've been talking about this for a while. Like, this is, it's not sustainable. The way that we do this is not sustainable. And eventually you get there, and we've gotten there. And I think over the years, people kind of, they got jaded to the, to the idea that there was a problem. And so, you know, we all said, "Ah, they say that every year, they, they say it's coming, it's coming." And, and I'm, I'm sorry, but it came. It's unfortunate. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. It's gonna be a tough year for, for you guys, it's gonna be a tough year for us, because there's gonna be sleepless nights for us, it's gonna be a lot of work, it's gonna be a ton of time waiting for families, you know, just going through the stuff. And, you know, it is what it is. I apologize to my kids ahead of time, not gonna see it. So, what can you do?
Um, I'm Jonathan Black, I live at, um, 104 Newton Street. Um, I just have a follow-up question to something that was brought up a couple of meetings ago. I'm just wondering if every single member of this committee has had a chance to visit, um, at least one of the school buildings? Because I, I just think it's hard to make decisions about the schools if you've never even been to any of our buildings.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak personally, you know, my, my youngest child is at the high school. Um, I've had two others graduate from, so, you know, being active in the schools when they were younger. Um, well, recently, I've, I've obviously spent a lot of time at the high school, but I remember when Mr. Gagin started, I had a child in that school and we could keep pretty good friends, uh, with my youngest, who's now a sophomore. So, I mean, we, we obviously, we don't get in probably personally as much as I'd like to, but it's on the list of things, Dr. O'Neill, the walkthrough. Um, you know, I, I think there's a, there's a lot of good things in all of our schools. Um, but much like my house, there's things that need to be repaired. Uh, you know, and we know that, and unfortunately, there's a different process when it comes to repairs. So, you know, we spend as much time as we can. And then, like I said, I, I go there with my children and have in the past, um, you know, and, and I can say my, my oldest graduated six years ago. Uh, thanks, Ben. And his schools look drastically different from like when my youngest was at JCS, let alone when my oldest was there. Yeah, we, we take great pride in our schools. And, and it's not just driving by, you see the outside. There's a lot of good that happens inside. Um, so we do, you know, in an ideal world, yes, we'd like to, I mean, we do our road trips. I call them road trips. At the, at the beginning of the year, we go to each school for a meeting. So we are in those schools at least at evening nights. But, um, I think it was last year, at the end of each of those meetings, um, Wade brought us around the school and showed us, you know, good, bad, and the ugly. Um, it was, I've known Wade a lot of years. He was so excited to bring us into the former boiler room at the Y. I'd never seen a grown man so excited to go knock out of the boiler room. So when we did these big projects, it was like Wade was like, "These schools look great." You know, big train project, um, like anything else, there, there is work to do, we know that. Uh, we rely on the administration to let us know these things. We know we have a problem, um, you know, the LGI route, or whether it be this route, JCS. We, we know what these problems are, we try and do the best we can. We are obviously working with a very limited amount of money. Um, and that's not even, you know, this is just keeping the lights on. Like if, uh, if a light, you know, falls from the ceiling, that's a completely different process. Uh, but, so that's personally. I'm kind of on the, the end of my, my time with my children in northern public schools. I had never thought to send my children anywhere else. Uh, I was never, full disclosure, two of my children did apply to Southeastern and get in. They chose to stay here, that was their decision. Um, but I know a couple of members have had walkthroughs. A couple more are on the books, so we will be out there as much as we can.
It's just like that, I was scheduled for today and then this bomb dropped, and I was like, how would you? I just did a few walkthroughs as well about a month ago. And I think what you guys have to understand too is, you know, I report back the things that I saw. You know, we are in constant communication as a school committee, of course, you know, legally, right? We're not breaking any laws, so don't anybody worry about that. Um, but we're in constant communication about things that we see, things that we hear. Um, you know, Jen is very good about it, and Joe is the same way, just always updating us on things that we, we updated on. Um, but yeah, we have done, we have done one.
So, just, uh, so a couple of things. I, I've done multiple group walkthroughs over my fifteen years, every school in schools. Uh, other than the LG, because I live on that side of town. I've had one child go from kindergarten all the way through to college now. And the other one's kindergarten all the way through to, she's in high school right now. So I, I, I believe I'm very familiar with, with what the schools are doing. Uh, my only question, I guess, or, or when you ask that question, or when you pose that, "Have you walked through?", because I don't think you can do this without going through the schools. I think, I think you're, you're thinking or you're implying, or maybe I'm inferring, I don't know, that these are things that we're doing lightly and, and kind of palmed out, and we're not really like thinking them through. I want it really clear, this, this is not an easy thing to do. You know, we, we sat down a couple of weeks ago and talked about these positions, and it was hard. It was really, really hard. And I know a lot of people were talking about, well, you know, what can we do? What can we do to save this? What can we do to save that? This isn't something that, that we take joy in by any stretch. You know, if, if I'm, if I'm being really honest about it, like, part of this is that we've, we've cut so much of the, what you would call, block over the years, that there's nothing left to cut like that. So I'll say something that's gonna make me unpopular. These cuts have to be made. They have to be made. It's as simple as that. And it's not impersonal. It's not, I'm cutting, you know, this is don't like, I'm cutting that position. I'm not saying it's just gonna cut, just saying it's, that's, that's the reality of how you have to think about this. This is, this is, we have to now go through this and say, okay, what positions, what position can we, you know, most afford to do without? And, and that might be a valid way to phrase it, because we can't really afford to do it without any of these positions. We're, we're literally at the guts now, right? We've, we've, we've cut the skin, we've cut the, you know, whatever, we're at the viscera now, we're in, we're in the guts, we're in the vital organs now at the schools. But unfortunately, we have to make those cuts because in fact, this is the final number, and it's another one point seven million. There's absolutely no way to, we can't, we can't dim the lights and get one point seven million. We can't turn the heat down to one point seven million. It's just not gonna work. So it's, it's not something we take lightly, it's not something that we're, we're, we're very cognizant of. Great work that's being done. And it honestly, it just makes it all that much harder. So I, I, I respect what you're saying, I, I respect what you're asking, please, please realize that this is.
I'm trying to find this, uh, that, you know, you're taking it lightly or anything like that. I just think that seeing what's really happening and going on is important too. Like, it gives you another piece of evidence, I think.
Right.
Like, what we actually need.
And that's, that's why it's so hard. I think we understand what's going on. And the problem is, is even if we understand, even if we say, "This is vital to the school", we may still need to cut it, because we just don't have the money. I mean, it's, this is, this is not a wants, needs, whatever. This is a funding issue. It's nothing more and it's nothing less. And I'm sorry to be, you know, callous and, and put it on such a base level, but that's, that's what this is. It's simply funding. We have A through Z, and we can fund A through M. And we gotta decide what A through M are gonna be. And N through Z are gonna get cut, because that's what we can afford to do, unfortunately. It's, it is, it is not, you know, it's not, not understanding what happens. It's not appreciating that, it's not valuing that at all. It's not the case.
And I think, I think to piggyback off of that too, this is a very collaborative effort. It's not us five being like, "We're gonna cut the high school, we don't like that math teacher, we're gonna deal with this." Like, that's not how it works. It kind of comes down from Jen and the admin team through, you know, up through the principals of like, hey, where can we start? All right, who, who's, you know, what positions are we looking at? Is the first grade class next year supposed to be a little bit smaller? So we can, you know, cut a first grade teacher and keep the class size the same. This isn't us five just going in and saying, "Okay, we don't like that. I hate athletics, I hate this over here, chop that off." That's not how it works. We take, I mean, we basically go off of central admins, you know, recommendations and then say, hey, what is that going to mean to our high school kids? What is that going to mean to LG? What is that going to mean to, you know, JCS? And, and try to, again, it's very difficult. You know, if, whatever you do, it doesn't matter. With so, something you cut, someone's not gonna like, that's how it goes, you know? So you have to try to do what's best for Norton and what's best for, what's best for our schools. And it's, it's nearly impossible, to be quite frank. And, and when we, I was just about to say one more time, like, and it's actually a collaborative effort, and it does come from, from the administration as it should. They say, "Okay, here's what we think." And when we sat down two weeks ago and went through the initial cuts, after every single, this is a position we're gonna cut, same thing, same thing was asked, "Why? Why are you cutting that?"
What's it doing for our students?
Yeah, what's it doing?
What is, what is the impact to that? Every single one. And we had, we had to cut twenty eight.
Twenty eight, twenty nine.
Twenty eight times, we said, "Why?" And if the answer's not good, say, "That's not a good answer." And there were some things that we said, "Nope, that's less important, or sorry, that's more important than this. We need to rearrange the priorities here." So it's, it, it, this is not a, you know, again, this is not like, you know, chop, chop, chop. It is a, explain this to me in depth. Explain it like on a Bible roll, because we need to know that we're doing the right thing, because this impacts lives, it impacts kids, adults, the people who are employed here. It, we, we get, trust me when I tell you.
I just wanna say, sitting in this seat too, I think it's very difficult, very difficult. You walk through the schools and you see these kids' faces and you know what's gonna happen. That did not sit well with me at all, any of us, right? And so, I've got one more year left, right? I'm done, next year, close to this time. And I know that I'm gonna leave this district worse than when I started. That's terrible. That's a terrible, terrible feeling to have. Terrible to our students, to our staff, to the people that we have got to know and love. This is terrible. So I just wanna understand, I want you to understand that even walking through schools, it is not easy for us to do that. It's not easy to look at students in the faces or our staff and have to sit here in the seat.
I think one thing to mention on, um, to just talk a little bit, I, I wanna just thank the administration. Um, they've worked countless tireless hours on this to give us the answers that we seek. We're asking them a question, we're looking at things top of the line. And they, they have, they anticipated our answers and they had valid answers to our questions. So I, I wanna publicly thank our administration, uh, our building leaders, all of those involved in our budget process. They have done a tremendous job, um, and have been held a pretty awful hand in doing it. So, um, I just want to thank Dr. O'Neill's staff, um, for giving us, at times, I think, a lot of information, some, you know, more than what we look for sometimes and more than what we've seen in the past. But this year, we absolutely needed all that information provided to us as we navigate what will be a troubling time in the next couple of months.
Where is the mic? Is this where the microphone is?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure Zoom can hear. Uh, my name is Val Cabral, I live at Fifty Man's Hill Avenue. I do not have children. Um, I have two questions that are somewhat pointed. One of them is, does anything, even in a level services budget, that wouldn't include fixing the Norton Middle School theater lights that haven't worked for like, literally had to stuff in the middle of a show this year?
No, that is not. That is, that's actually a capital item. That's on our capital list when we're able to move it forward.
Awesome. Do we know what the amount is on that?
Um, off the top of my head, I believe it's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
All right.
This is that field? Yeah, all right. What's that?
If no, if people aren't aware, middle of the way through, Norton Singers were paying the school to rent the space, and we had to stop the show multiple times, because one day we couldn't get the house lights off. We've had multiple shows where we've had to stop at intermission and rebuild the entire light system. So it's not a great system in there.
It's original nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, that's pretty old for a light system in a school, for sure. Um, the other question is, I know last year, the cuts that were made were a flashpoint. Um, and I know there were issues where the students found out about them in the first place. Everybody was very upset, parents got upset. Um, do we know when that number of those twenty-eight to now forty-four people are gonna come out? Like, when we're gonna know what those cuts are gonna look like?
Um, personally, and this is something that I've shared with the NTA, this is something that I've shared with school committee, I would really like to be able to do layoff notices prior to April vacation, which is a month from now. Um, because I believe that our staff deserves to know what, what the future holds for them. And, um, I don't, technically, contractually, by law, we have until June fifteenth. To me, that is too late, um, to do something like that, that is extremely impactful. Um, whether we're able to do that before the April vacation, we're really saying, okay, it's not going to be, uh, uh, this many, it's not going to be this many. Um, we are really going to need to sit down and, and really look at our programs and our enrollment and so many other things as a committee, um, that we have only scratched the surface on. Um, in terms of fees and, um, transportation, all of those things are now going to need to be relooked at and discussed. Um, so that's my goal, but I just care, thank you.
Yeah, you know, historically, I, I wanna say it was probably September, October. Um, I think I, I might have said it publicly, I know I said it privately. I don't, I don't wanna hear about cuts, like our last meeting before summer break. Like, we had a pretty good amount of people show up to Dr. Ackerman's first meeting. Um, and that's, that's too late, you know, welcome to Norton. Um, that was too late that, but the problem then is our budget is set at town meeting, which is, to me, it's very late. Um, and, and, you know, I said this to Mr. Schleicher, you know, it's, it's the biggest part of town meeting and it gets little to no discussion or anything. Uh, it's just, yeah, yeah, thanks, everybody, I, nah, yes. Um, so that's always kind of frustrating, because like, we do all this work for six months and we get our number validated and it's like, there's no.
Can you speak a little more about that? Because I definitely think it's worth discussing, but I'm not, I'm not sure what the ask for discussion is. That's come up a lot of times from other people, not just you, not just here, that we don't really talk about it. And I'm, I'm curious about like what the conversation will look like, because I think most people assume there's nothing we can do by the time it gets to town meeting.
You're, in a grand scheme, you can't. However, the exception being, if you wanted to add a million dollars to the school department budget, you can formally write a request, bring that up to the town clerk and say, "I wanna add a million dollars to the school budget." It goes through the motions. However, mysteriously, you can't have a million dollars come from someone. So yes, you have to write out where you're having it come from. So whether that's not picking on our town friends, uh, I wanna take three hundred thousand from police, three hundred thousand from fire, four hundred thousand from highway, and give it to the school department. You can do that as a citizen of Norton, as a taxpaying citizen. That is your right to do so. Um.
So we're not making any friends?
No, we're not making any friends, you know. I believe the only time in my twenty-plus years in town that that's happened, I believe, was because I think you made that motion, the year we privatized food services to switch some money, um, from the town budget to school budget because of saving. Um, from the town budget to school budget because of savings.
It was a, it was a very, a very specific example though, where we were essentially laying off. Like however many people.
Yeah, thirteen sixteen.
And, and all I said was, there's now a, a healthcare saving, insurance savings to the town. And then, and we should get that back so that we don't have to lay off any more people. Cause we were laying off a bunch of people as it was. So, uh, and, and I will say, uh, I, I, I somewhat disagree with you about you can't do anything to me. I actually think that's the only place you can do something. But honestly, uh, but to this point, if you say, I wanna put a million dollars more into the school budget, you have to say, and I'm taking it from A, B and C. And.
And I'm like, no means a town meeting expert.
Honestly, I would, I would, if you were to introduce that, I would vote against it. Because this is not a, hey, everybody else is doing great and we're not. Everybody else, we're, we're gonna be cut from our prior year budget. Everyone else, from what I'm understanding, is going to be as well. So this isn't something where, you know, it's, the schools aren't getting screwed. Honestly, the point of this meeting, I think, is basically just to make sure everybody understands this is what's happening. Because every year when we do this, last year, Mr. Ackerman's first, you know, oh my God, what? I didn't hear about this. Really? We had ten meetings on it. Ten meetings on a town meeting where we voted it through and everybody knew what was gonna happen. I mean, this is, this is the problem. This is why people get mad at us. Everybody says, you didn't tell me personally. You didn't come to my house. Hey, wanna make sure you heard about this, what we're doing this. We can't do that. We have public meetings. We disseminate information as best we can. It would be great if we had a, you know, a media person to do it. We had the cards. I mean, this is, you know, this is, this is the reality. So, you know, I, I think it's important for people to understand what this meeting's about. This is not a hand meeting. It's not a woe is me meeting. This is simply a, hey, guys, just a rare stance. Here's where we're at. No surprises. Nobody gets blindsided later on.
That is, Alexia, this is a lot to run in circle. So what does this whole community? Many need from the community? Like, if we all, like, vote to the towns, saying, you know, increase taxes by. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I was saying, what does the board need from the community? Do you need us to write letters to the town of saying, like, increase taxes by five hundred bucks so that the school can be funded?
I think we can't, we can't do that.
So you argue to town.
Sorry, I think for a time that you could do that.
Proposition two and a half, which is you basically can't raise, I, I think, don't quote me on the intricacies of the law. But I think the intricacies of the law, basically, you can't raise your entire tax base by more than two and a half percent. So there's actually a cap on how much we can, we can raise our taxes. And you're gonna override, which they talk up to everybody. So you can override Prop two and a half. Based on whatever number the select board has to put onto a, a town meeting, uh, uh, back. And then the town goes, makes a vote. We've had overriding texts in the past. We've done overrides in terms of debt exclusions. In addition to the high school building, uh, what else can we do? Well, the fields. So we've done those before. We've never actually overwritten Prop two and a half.
So I just publicly wanna say, it would, it wouldn't be what you're doing for the schools if you're doing for the town. Yes, we don't want this to be schools versus town. It's, it's one community. So it's what you're doing for the community. Um, you know, we obviously, you know, we can give everybody all the information they want, but the town decide. I think this is Sherry's line, that the board has to decide what board wants to be.
When they grow up, and then you don't need to respond to this, but we're talking about cuts. So maybe instead of cutting positions, and this is way out there, but cut a building. And instead of having as many elementary schools that we have consolidate and have like a K to two. And a three to five. And that way, every building has a library. And the things we've been talking about.
So it's actually not a huge savings, which sounds insane, right? Because you still have the same number of students, you still need the same number of teachers. It's really only about a half a million dollar savings once. Because we have looked at it. Um, and the other issue is that people think our schools are empty. They are not. We have very, very little space in any of our three elementary schools. We are filled to the brim. At LG North, we, every single space is taken. Um, we have our ELL teacher who teaches on stage. Uh, which is also the cafeteria. So I'm sure you guys can imagine how well that goes during lunchtime. Um, our, our class, our schools are very, very full. Um, but that is definitely. Something that we've heard many, many times over the years is like, well, let's close, let's close LG and let's close the L school. Um, it's just not possible. And, and ultimately, it's not a huge savings.
Jen, we also have some teachers that are in closets.
Yes. Yes, we absolutely.
And I think the other thing here is like, well, we don't have the space, but if we had to, could we do it? Maybe, if you want thirty five kids in the classroom, that's the trade off. You know, do you wanna make it that second graders, instead of having twenty to one, have thirty five to one? You know, no one wants to do that, you know? Cause I mean, the only way, saving the building, okay, that's a half a million dollars, call it a little bit more, it's inflation and everything else, sure. We're still gonna have to bring some of those teachers from LG to JCS or wherever we're gonna go with them, you know, cause you're not gonna be able to do it. The only real savings you got, that means anything to millions of dollars, is, is in SAC. That's where your biggest expenses are. That's where you go to.
Kristy Dietz, uh, Norton employee. Um, been a resident of Norton at one time. I am a product of Norton, kindergarten through twelfth grade. And I've also taught in the district for twenty eight years. Um, very disappointed to hear how we've gotten to this. I've worked with many of you that are on school committee. I've worked with. Many of the staff as well as the administration. This is the worst I've seen, worst I've experienced in my twenty eight years. Worst that I can remember as a student going through, um, as a student myself. Forty nine plus years ago, um, way more I had available to me than what we even have currently right now. Which is SAC and here we are, twenty twenty four, that we have less services, less activities, less opportunities than potentially. And things that I didn't have to pay for that you all have now as fees. Um, my question, as much as I'd say, and I would, and this comes back to what the plan originally was for tonight, which, correct me if I'm wrong. Was it to vote, discuss and to vote and put forward what you were gonna put forward to town? Correct?
We're required to.
Right, we still have to do that. So that's why, and that's why I, I wanted to know. So that was the plan? You getting the information that you got, is that still the plan tonight and still what you have to give to the town?
Doesn't change what we actually need for level services. The level services is level services. It's, it is what it is. The twelve percent increase is, is where level services is. And it's, this is not a. Right, again, this is not a, hey, here's what we want for our budget. It's just a simply, here's what our budget would be if we had level services. Then it goes to FinCom, it goes to the, where's eleven, we're at it. You know, uh, there's, so FinCom puts forward their budget, Mike Unis puts, puts forward his budget. Uh, and I think it should actually reverse those words. Mike Unis, Mike Unis puts, puts forward his budget first, which includes his agenda, what the school should get. The FinCom then looks and they put their recommendation budget, that goes to the town meeting and then the town goes on the budget. So, but tonight is, is simply, I hate to say it's a formality, but it's a formality of, this is what our level services budget would look like. Full transparency, just so everybody knows.
And that's what I would, I wanted to confirm that that was, and even with the information that you were getting, that was. Um, and also, will it also, cause I also know that we put the numbers of what it would have looked like if we'd gotten the three. Or the four, or the five. And I think it was very interesting to me to look at with those cuts. That we were talking at, like a first grade, we would have a class size of twenty seven. You're talking now forty something cuts. That class size is gonna go up in all of those. And I just think that needs to also be put in there when we're talking about not getting that three, that four, that five. So that it's transparent of what that is going to look like to the community. Because when you talk about at first grade, twenty seven, and I'm talking about was when you got your three percent. Kids per classroom and now making another fifteen cuts percent? I can't imagine what those cuts and what those numbers are gonna look like in the class sizes. And I'm just saying, I totally get that. I just think it needs to be also what the potential could be because that's out on there for the community and the public. And I think it's important to make sure that that's also updated if that's what we're going to. And I'm sure it will be, I just think.
And I think, and we agree, and just to reiterate, this is literally, we found out about it, us this morning.
Right, yes. I totally, and that's why I was asking about whether or not you would continue with your vote.
Yeah, we'll continue to vote because it, because it's, doesn't.
It's not gonna change.
But as far as like putting out, you know, disseminating the information, a hundred percent we will. It's, at this point, we just honestly haven't had the time to.
Yeah.
I mean, it's so, it's so fresh.
It's going to require a lot of time to sit down, look at programs, look at numbers, look at seniority, look at teacher licenses. We're gonna have to do all of those things, um, again, um, and, you know, add to that list that we've already started to establish. Um, but it, it will be significant. Our, our budget is due to town hall in a month. Um, and so. Like, it's, it's fine. Our budget is done. The budget's the budget. Like, we just have to vote on it.
Sorry, I, I think it's important to point out, ta- taking out the information we found out today. We, I, I can pretty much safely say, we have a plan for what three, four and five. We don't make that decision, the town does. So whenever we got back, we knew this was going, but we were fair, we were confident that. These twenty people should have, you know, hit the ground running that if you know, you know. There was also a chance that thirty, we could get to thirty if it was three percent or vice versa. So, but our important thing is, you know, some of us are friendly to staff. Um, you know, some of us, you know, we know our kids, students, have. Teacher, I saw a teacher today and my daughter had, well, great, I bought her a cup. Um, so we want the folks that are impacted by this to have a, 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 a good chance to. You know, welcome to, but have a career somewhere else, if that's a real possibility. So, um, and that's why I stressed. You know, the folks that were finding out at, last year found out too late and they, it was an uphill battle. So we're, we're trying to weigh everything over, trying to give our staff a good chance. Unfortunately, there isn't a spot for them next year. So, but, you know, we have guidelines, we have this. A lot of what we found out today. Doesn't impact where our vote is in the next twenty minutes. Um, largely because if you think about, we're voting what our budget should be. The town votes what our budget is. And then we come back and say, well, we, we anticipated it was this. These thirty people, now forty four. Um.
So that's, I think just a point of clarification as well, is like, when you say twenty eight positions. That doesn't necessarily mean twenty eight classroom teachers. That always seems to kind of leak out there of like, oh, I thought I was gonna go, fuck, cut twenty eight teachers. That is not the case.
Yeah.
I think, I'll speak for myself, but I think I can kinda speak for all the board. We know, and I think Jen knows as well, being a teacher, there's no more important person in our schools than our classroom face of teachers. You know, it's every study in America is behind that, that the teachers who are in that room are the second most important, uh. Uh, adults in that child's life, next to their parents. Uh, you know, so I think when we look at that, we, as of the five of us, kinda took that into consideration of like, okay. You know, we're going to try to save every possible teacher we can. Where else are we looking? You know? There are going to be teachers cut, you know, uh, you're gonna, you know, whether it be a special or someone who's down to extra changes, whatever it may be. But from our standpoint, we were trying to do our best to keep the teachers in, in, you know, in those classrooms. Try to keep the parents in those classrooms. And again, that's unfortunately, you still gotta cut twenty eight, you know? And now if we go to forty four, that brings in a whole other stack.
And to add to that, Nick, I think it's also important for people to realize that, um, we have some retirements. That are coming up and we may also have resignations. So what we will do is we will look at those positions and decide, is that a position that we still need? Or is that something that we can eliminate through attrition? And so it may not be twenty eight people with a pink slip, which by the way, they're not pink, but it will be, it will be. Though that number of positions. So it's important for the community to know that as well.
And, and just a final, a final word, I guess, I'm not, uh, cause I think what Nick says is very important. Like, it's, we're really hard to keep it away from teachers. It's, it's the last thing you wanna cut. That being said, I think it's important that they know, and I, I don't know how much we've discussed, you know, only. At, by the end, we had gotten to teachers. So what does that mean? That means we got to the point where we had to start cutting teachers. And with the one point seven billion, that's where we're at. We're at teachers now. So just, so everybody's clear out where we're at, you know? So it's, it's not what we wanna do, but, but we're there.
Let me just go here. Yes, I'm Peter J. Williams, I'm a married man, one fifty seven Metz, but I'm a, I'm a lifelong Norton man. I've lived here for thirty seven years and thirty eight years and my good friend Bill Guever says. In the past forty three years, this town has never passed an override. And this is an article that I posted from nineteen ninety three and Bill Guever back in nineteen ninety, he said. This town has to start finding more revenue to pay for the services it wants, or understand that it's not going to have the service it expects. Then I've lived in this for thirty eight years. I'm a supporter of the school system and this is gonna hurt, but. I will stand by the school committee, the teachers and the students a hundred percent. And because I, beyond being married, I still love the students, no matter what, but I love you all.
Thank you, Peter.
I don't wanna follow Peter. Couldn't have gone first. Karen Drain, I, uh, six north Washington street. Um, I just wanna talk a little bit about special education. Um, my son is in special education and not only is he in special education, but he's in a specialized program. So, um, he's one of those kids that on this budget is costing us more for the town. Um, and I've been concerned, I've gone to meetings since, I don't even know when the budget started, October, November, whatever. Um, and I've heard how special education is talked about and it's often talked about these state mandates. And, um, that special education is followed. You know, that special education is costing us so much and therefore we don't have enough for general education. And that is, um, not true. Those kids are our kids. They live in our town. They deserve that education. Is the school committee actually gonna say that because the state mandates it, that's why you're providing those services? Would we not be providing those services if the state didn't mandate them? Um, the problem is, is this, this town does not increase its revenue. Um, we had a chance, I, I would love somebody to crunch the numbers and find out if we passed an override and. Peter, you're gonna tell me sixteen and seventeen, two thousand?
Seventeen sixteen.
Um, we, we would not be here.
We, we would still.
We would be probably, you know.
It would be less, but we'd still be here.
We would be looking at another over here, one thousand.
And that is a, that's within our control. That is within our control as a town. But we can control that. We can't control the state. We can't control, the state only gives us thirty dollars because we're not Lawrence. We are not Lawrence. We're not Taunton. We're, you know, there's million dollar houses in this town. Um, but in our control is that, but I do wanna speak to the fact that special education is not. The reason that we're in this situation. Um, and those are our kids. They're my kids.
Yeah, so, sorry, nobody, I don't think anybody's ever said to show you.
Not here, but at the last meeting, somebody said, as a school committee member said, what would happen if we didn't follow those mandates?
That's not what I said. Nice try, Ellen.
No, tell us what you said.
This, this is what I said. No, I said, what would happen if the unfunded mandates that came down from the state, if we didn't have the revenue sources to fund them? What happens? I think it's a fair question. If we can't fund them as a town and we don't get an override and we're staring at a four point five million dollar deficit. What happens?
But it's the town's responsibility to educate their children.
Correct.
Why should the state be paying for that?
Cause in special education, there's, there's reimbursements that come into play.
And they are, I mean, it's certainly earned.
But the problem is, communities across the Commonwealth are seeing an increase in special education needs of students. Um. Right now, they're seeing a, a, a very dramatic increase because a lot of the children that are starting in kindergarten have come out of COVID. So when you see, you know, early intervention programs are at capacity, preschool programs are at capacity. And the problem is, when a child becomes, comes in a preschool or kindergarten, we don't quite know what their needs are. But the difference in special education and general education is special education students have a legally binding contract that must abide by. So when Mr. Schleicher talks about unfunded mandates, I'm not speaking for him, we get those for general education. Not necessarily special. So special education mandates, what we have to give these students because they have a legally binding contract with the town or the school department. So we can't do anything. Those, those are costs. One thing, you know, we look at, and, and I, I have a special needs student, I have not a district student for a while. I know what the costs were. I have family members that are in a safe vote. So I, I know the special education world and I, I expect, you know, what those educators do. The problem we have is the state education board. Can come in here, into any district and say, you have to teach our kids this, whatever that is. So if it's, I think the last change was civics as opposed to something at the high school level. All they said was, you gotta teach civics. They didn't say you gotta get a teacher certified. They didn't say you gotta get a teacher certified, you gotta get a curriculum certified, you have to get this certified. They just said, you're teaching civics now. Those are what I think Mr. Schleicher is adhering to. On special education, we can't do anything on special education costs. And and I know for a fact they are skyrocketing. Just last year, one of our collaboratives. The state allowed them to raise their tuition by twenty percent. But unfortunately, if we have a student that can only get services. At that collaborative. Then that student goes there, our hands on top, and and we can't do anything about that. I mean. We've we've tried to talk to our state representatives, tried to have these discussions with the town. The only real part of special education I think we can try and control is the transportation. Working with, you know. A a van or or maybe trying to say, if we have two students going close by, we've invested in some minivans. Have some of our own drivers. It's it's really just, it's it's a rip in the bucket of. What we're trying to identify is, a lot of our discussions that we talk about. We can't change at the town level when it comes to reimbursement rates and things like that. One of the big things that a couple of years ago, tried to have a special education circuitry account set up.
Stabilization.
Stabilization, it it didn't go through. Um, special education costs. Are, to the latest point earlier, they're rising because the needs of children younger are rising. You know, I graduated high school many years ago. Things are different then. As I mentioned earlier, my son graduated six years ago. Things are different, were different for his two sisters. In just six years. So those who are thinking, you know, special education is, you know, something, we try and say. You know, our school budget is for our twenty-six hundred long students that we have in our district. We don't separate them by special education in general. We do this so we can show where our costs are going. But we don't treat any student different, whether they're on an IEP or five oh four, or they're just children from down the street. So we we try and make it a point that we don't discuss it that way when we talk about cost. But when we talk about special education, those mandates are in place because of those students' needs.
If I can just add to that, Karen, thank you for sharing that and I appreciate that. And um. As an educator and a mother, right? I have daughters, freshman, she has dyslexia, she's been on IEP since she was in fourth grade. I have a son who's in fifth grade, he has ADHD. An attentive type, which is important to designate, um, he's on a five oh four. Um, I I think it's really important that we make sure that we're messaging around like all students. And it's really, really important for us to make sure that every single student that comes to Norton's Public Schools. Has the best possible education that we can provide for them. And we have spent. So much time and so much effort and like worked so hard with our staff and with our families to create programs in district. Because we know and research shows that students attending school with their peers. Their neighbors is so much better for them than to be, you know, in a different placement in a collaborative or a private setting. It's so difficult be just because of the. Golden handcuffs, so to speak, um, of of educating our students these days. And. Uh, when you guys see my budget book and I've shared it with people before. We all have education as a common experience and it's something that we all can talk to. We've all been there. It's personal for us. But education has changed so significantly and the needs of our students have significantly changed when. I'm about the same age as Dan and like I remember, I was like reading, writing, and arithmetic, like that was what you went to school for. You did not have. A lot of these extra things. And now we do so much more. Our teachers and our staff are. You know, counselors, we do SEL, we teach them how to, you know, persevere, we. All of these other life skills that are so important for our students. It is just the dynamics ha- have significantly changed. And I think when we look at the mandated costs. We don't have flexibility in those costs, where we do have flexibility in other areas. Um, so that is why we show it that way, to let people understand that. But I don't want you or anyone else to think that um. It's an us versus them. It is one hundred percent. We are always looking for what's the best and just for all of our students.
So Karen, I'm gonna change my opening statement. It's my last one, almost started a dialogue. I have never suggested that we should not educate specially, specialize education. Never, never set up on time. This is not, I hate to say this, this is not an educational discussion. This is a a a financial discussion, unfortunately. The reality is. Special education is mandated. So it will grow at a larger rate than the general education will. Just please can back me up. If something grows at a larger rate than than anything else, it will become a larger and larger piece of the whole. That's just the reality. So it's important for us to point that out. It's it's not saying that. Special education shouldn't be funded or we should whatever. It's pointing out, listen. This eats a larger and larger piece of our general education budget. I I get where people in the town might look at that and say, it's your fault. That's. Not true, right? I was about to say a word, I shouldn't have said that. It's it's not, I mean. We we are mandated to to fund that and we should be. We're not saying, we should be mandated to fund the general education too. But we're not. It's just the reality of where we're at. So that's the finances of it, right? It's. A becomes larger, so B is gonna become smaller. It's just, unfortunately, that's, again, that is our enemy. No, it's our friend, but also our enemy in this case. So. So what do we do? We have these discussions, say, hey, this is why this is happening. There was a question earlier about, well, does does Medicaid pick up anything? Listen, a lot of these costs, this has been a a discussion for, I've been doing this for fifteen years. And I could say, it's it's been fifteen years. I remember distinctly sitting down at the Pincome years and years ago. There's a guy, I don't remember his name, he's he's been quite so long. And he asked, he said, well, why isn't, why isn't insurance, why isn't Medicare, you know, Medicaid, why why isn't health insurance picking this up? Certain things, they probably should be, right? You're not, if you look at them, they're not really educational. So so why are we required to come up? This is not, I think this, I won't speak for, but I think Nick's point was. You know, to to say we're not gonna, to say we're not gonna pay the mandates wasn't, hey, we don't want to. It was more of a, hey. State, federal, can you help us out? We can't afford to do this, you know, and this is. We're seeing it right now. We can't afford to do this and it's not. Special education, yeah, I'm really clear on that. It's, the reality is our budget is growing a lot faster than our revenue base. It just is what it is. Now. There's a section of it that we're mandated to pay. I'm mandated to pay the other side too. Right? And I mean, it's it's crazy. This is, there's, there's no greater equalizer. I know we talk in society, and I'm sorry, I'm getting getting out soapbox now. We talk in society all the time about, you know, equity and blah, blah, blah. There is no greater equalizer in education. That's it. That's the equalizer. If everybody's educated to the highest degree they can be, equality will take care of itself. We don't do it. We talk about it, a lot of lip service, blah, blah, blah. We never do it. Why not? Most important thing in the. I I never go, it's again, I hate to kill, I mean, those fifteen years. This is a difficult position. And there's times, a lot of times, when it stinks. No one says thank you is, you know, mostly complaints. But I believe this is as important a position as you can possibly have in this town. People said, well, poor Slapman. Nope, no interest in that. This is where the ashes, this is, this is where you make a difference for lives. Lives get made, you know, better or worse here. And and right now, unfortunately, the reality is with the funding issue. We're we're possibly gonna make it worse. And, you know, Sherry was upset about it, or like. To leave this, you know, in a in a worse position than than when she started. And I would make the argument that we've done a lot of good over the years too. So. You know, and sometimes, sometimes the good is just staving off as much of the bad as you can over time. And that's kind of what we've been doing recently. You know, we've been basically fighting, fighting at the walls, like trying to keep this. This one overrunning our district. And unfortunately, you're starting to win, you know, so. And and I don't, honestly, I don't know where we go from here. I I don't know what the next step is, I mean. It's. There's no white, you know, white knight coming in to save the day. There's nobody riding on a horse saying, hey, I got the money here. Or maybe there is, I don't know, but but. It's not gonna be the town. We just don't have the revenue, you know, and I know people, well, we need an override. I mean. Town meeting is in, what, uh, two months?
May thirteen.
I don't, May, May thirteenth. I mean, I don't, I don't think an override is realistic right now. I think it's, I think. We should start kind of rubbing our heads around it. The reality is, we're gonna be in this situation at least for the following year. So.
For an override to run valid, it would have to mean ordering on that, it's like whereby an extract.
Yeah, I mean, it's just. I I I just don't see the time. And we can't put an override on ballot. It has to come from. It actually has to come from citizens. Through through the.
I believe they're discussing it tonight. In the meeting, I'd say personally, my my thought process was, put an override on. What what's the worst that can happen? Maybe people will get nervous enough or or understand the cuts that are gonna happen and let them decide. We've always said that, the people decide. We've done it. Uh, four times in my career here of overrides and we weren't successful. So the year out of planning and all the preparation, it didn't work. Didn't work. All the information we get out, we walked, we knocked on house, the doors, we went to fields, we did it all, it didn't work.
And Jay, I remember.
So here's the thing, put it on a ballot and let the townspeople decide. How much hurt is enough? How much do we wanna suffer? Your call, right? You make the decision. So that's, that was what I would recommend. Um, and I did mention it to Pincome and the chair of the Slapboard. That would be my recommendation, put it on a ballot, let the people decide. And you know what? Put it on a ballot until. Just keep putting it on a ballot until. Until we realize what it takes as a community to to educate, to have police and fire that we need, to have a full-time park and rec director. Put it on until. So now I go on record, that's what by my recommendation would be. Anybody else?
And and try and remember those days, but I feel you, Bonnie and Sarah, back in twenty sixteen, seventeen, about the committee. Um. We, we were part of a good, good, and then we tried to fight a good battle we needed. If you fight a good battle and. This school needs money, right?
The problem is the battle is exhausting. It's exhausting. Does anybody else have any? Oh, Paula Daniels, uh, fifty-four Power Street. I don't have finance committee since twenty nineteen. I have two children in the school district. You might have to speak up. Sorry, I. Sorry, Paula Daniels, fifty-four Power Street. Um, I'm on the finance committee and I have two children in the school district, um, fourth grade and seventh grade. Uh, I really just have a process question. I'm just trying to follow all this. So we are meeting with you all on the twenty-fifth of March, in finance committee. Uh, are you presenting to us the twelve percent? Budget or are you gonna be able to present to us what?
That's more than a budget. Depending on our order is at the conclusion. My guess would be we'll we'll present to you the twelve percent budget with full knowledge. Yeah, I mean, we, I think we, we've always been pretty, uh. Pretty clear about like, we get that that's what you're gonna do, you know, and. The the methodology or the mindset is what we spend. We present what was required to keep our services intact. So that people see it knowing full well that that's not a reality. And and you guys look at it and say, okay, we get it. Here's what you actually can, you know, can get. Here's what we can actually afford to give you. And that's fine. We we get that. So, yeah, I mean, my my guess is we're not not yet, and I'm not. Time to go to here, but my guess is that that's what we'll present to you guys as a budget. You know, budget, that that would be what our budget would look like. But again. It's it's a process, right? And and we fully understand that that is not what the town would want by any stretch.
If we don't tell you what we need.
Right.
No, I know that. So we heard that all in the dreaming. That's why I'm like. I wanted to move this process along. I wanna, I want the town to hear what's really going on and for us to go through the formality again of this like dream world. Of the twelve percent increase.
So will they, will they want us to?
No, no, I mean, no, no, I just wanna know, like, can we start having the real conversations? Like, when you guys are presenting to us, like. You know, what does that actually mean?
Yeah, what what what's this actually gonna mean?
A better idea of what that's about. Just to confirm, I have April eighth on my calendar. For the schools to uh, present. And so maybe you and I can connect offline just to. Double check.
I will check that.
Okay, I thought we had the twenty.
I think that's, that's part of the budget process. It's kind of a little backwards. Because. You know, and I said backwards, meaning as an elected board with a department under us. We set our budget. There is no board that oversees police, fire, parks and rec. So they go through the town manager to you guys and 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 so. And again, I think I mentioned this earlier, we don't know what. The town's budget does look like for police, fire, parks, and rec.
They all started presenting to us last week and we're definitely seeing over thirty percent for everyone. Um, so maybe they haven't been told the hard truth, maybe they all got the news today too. I don't know. Um, but yeah, we're not really seeing reality from them yet either. Um.
So I I mean, you got, you know, and I don't wanna speak for your board. I don't know the incidence. You know. The way it's been for my years here. We brought on our budget, we send it to you guys. You guys talk to the town manager, he talks about the other town department budgets. You guys then say, this is what the recommendation from us is going to be for town meeting. If you guys were to come back to us and say. You're gonna get a one percent increase, then we work within our confines to say. We're cut, you know, at that point, we have eleven percent that we're not getting, so we're getting one percent. So we wait for those recommendations. And um, you know, and then you guys and and before town meeting are the final decision makers and then. You know, and. Peter said May thirteenth, so May fourteenth, you would say, this is what our budget looks like next year. These are the takeaways, these are the cuts that we're going to make and we're ready to go on July the first, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Right, right. Um, and as far as override process, I know you mentioned the ballot um, option. And the deadline being next Friday for it to be on the ballot, which is um, town election is April twenty-seventh. Um. We also have another option for during town meeting to present two budgets to the town. One being, um, what everyone needs for their departments and showing that, which would require an override. And then one being, um, the double cuts. And then the town could decide which budget they want for the town.
So that, in that scenario, the role would essentially be reversed, as I understand it. So would you go to ballot box first? Or go to the floor of town meeting first?
Right.
And then you'd have to have a special election after. After, until the two hundred and ten thousand dollars. You could actually include two budgets. Yeah, one being. Well, to answer your question, yeah, I don't know if you have the answer to this, uh, or I see Zach working back there. He may know the answer to this uh, as well. And and I wanna purpose this by saying, I'm not saying I think this is necessarily a good idea. But is there a way to fund a budget deficit like this by floating a bond or something? Again, I get it. It's not, it's not ideal. But because this seems like it's so compelling this year, and it it looks like it's going to not just suspend everybody. Is there a way to do that or is an override really our only option?
I've never heard of what you're suggesting, but we can definitely talk about it. Zach, do you know?
You know, we often do that, which is very. See, so I'm just. We don't have the respect. Uh. You could, right. You can say, well, they're not, but. And then it's a whole other.
Yeah, that's a whole, that creates a whole.
So we, so we can't finance a deficit, basically.
And we don't even have that money in free cash, what you.
And and I, and again, I wanna purpose this. I did not think it was.
And that's again, what we did last year, we took seven hundred thousand, I think it was, from stabilization. Uh, and that was a Band-Aid and, you know, and then it's probably just doubled the next year. Um. Sorry, but yeah, a bond is an interesting question. I I have a head that's, we can definitely talk to Mike or James about it.
Yeah. But I mean, the seven hundred thousand, it's it's kind of certainly back to what we talked about before, right? Where we're. We're always doing these little things to make it better. We're even big things, seven hundred thousand, I'm not trying to say it's a small amount of money, but. You know, we're doing these things to to stave this off and eventually you run out of little things to do. And that's kind of where we're at.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify the concept as far as like what we might be seeing and I'll double check the date.
Yes, thank you.
For when we're meeting. Thank you so much.
Oh, it's fine, sir. Come second. Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on. Zach, you might come up so it might catch you up here. Over to Governor. Don't be shy.
Just name it. Zach, name an address to please.
Zach Phillips, Rebridge Drive, also a member of the finance committee. A couple of points to make. That a lot of people may not realize. Municipal governments do not carry unemployment insurance. So, or if you lay off. If they don't get a job, you're paying them anyway. And that's gonna make it even a worse disaster come the fall. Because if these people stay on unemployment, town is obligated to pay them. And it's a snowball that goes downhill. So people need to stay on that. Second, they're like, I didn't hear the first part of your presentation because I took the orientation at high school. My son's going to next year. Uh, but can we see a budget when you do come to finance committee that includes? Um. No teacher cuts? So you commit your farts whenever you go. I didn't hear the first part of this.
Yeah.
Administration, but this is the number we would need not to lay off any. Teacher-facing, student-facing demands? It's like, I think, yeah, oh, Zach, you have that? Okay, I haven't seen it yet. And I think that, yeah, because it's not gonna change the way it's really been expected. And and the other thing that we'll do is we'll need something about, okay, no teacher cuts. You know, we need to be here or.
You know, we need to be here or need to be here with, you know, increases to fees, et cetera. You know, and I hate to say that, I, I feel like an airline will like charge it for everything. But yeah, right, I mean, it's, but we need to start thinking in that area, you know.
There's no other option. We, we just don't have a capacity, we do not. I, I can't even begin to imagine what that would like laying on that, that many people. And so we're going to have to be really creative and look at other options.
I'd be curious to see if we, if we can even get to a point where we're not, you know, where we're essentially getting what we have in the books this year. That's the other thing. I, I mean, I, I get the, I get the idea of saying we need to be to get no teacher else. I don't know if we can get there, I mean, just, and it's not, I'm not talking, no, I'm talking about a revenue standpoint, I don't know if we just have the revenue to get us to that one. So, I, I mean, I think we were, we were closer with our last discussion, but now with, you know, today's events, that yeah, might as well take the, the work we've done. Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, if we're, if we're actually getting caught, it's like, you know.
And and I think it's important to know that some of the positions that we've talked about may not be student-facing, oh, sorry, um so, sorry. I sat down, I thought we were overdone. Um, some of the positions that we've talked about eliminating, I think it's important for people to know, while they may not be a classroom teacher, they are still student-facing in terms of providing students with support. Additional support for reading and math and making sure that they are able to be successful. One of the things that I've said for many, many years is that if you want to, um, I'm gonna use the word quote, and I hope you guys will understand, fix your special education problem, you have to focus on general education. And we need to make sure that we are enhancing core instruction in every single classroom across the district if we want to support all students in their learning. When we do not have strong core instruction, that is when we see students falling behind and we see parents and teachers having conversations about interventions, about IEP, about testing. A strong core instructional program eliminates a lot of that conversation. So it's important for us to know that those, some of those, some of those things are already on topic. Does anybody have anything else they wanna add or say or? No? Thank you for doing a thankless job. I get that it's hard and I get that it sucks and I get that nobody says thank, this is about fraud. No, it sucks. I mean, I, they, Jen, I, well, my mother was a conservation manager previous to my childhood, so I have been to plenty of meetings where she got a lot of things said about her and you can find it all time, because there are articles if you want to, but um, it is a thankless job and none of us, I don't think, think that you guys are sitting here hoping to get things from the students and, I mean, I appreciate as a, as a citizen knowing what you all are doing and all the work that you do. So thank you, because it is hard. Appreciate that.
I freaking bow. You do a good job.
Thank you, Peter. Alright, so. I, I, I got my notes. I'm sorry about me. I know it's gonna sound pleading, but I'm, I'm following on. Alright, so we need a motion to close the public hearing on the FY twenty twenty five school budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Maybe a roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Justine?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Now we're gonna move to a motion, I need a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty five budget in the amount of thirty-eight million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars as recommended. Is there a second? Another roll call, Dan?
Yes.
Uh Nick?
Yes.
Justine?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Uh, yeah.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you all very much. But thank you, Pity, for approving what we had discussed at the level of government. I do wanna mention something, um, sorry, the school committee has been invited by the Slough Board to have a meeting next Thursday. Um for starting budget and process, if you're able to make that work, if we're not, we'll have to. So we're doing FinCom as well? Um, Thursday, just to fit, I only heard Slough Board, um so if you're not invited to the party, but um. Uh thank you. Yes, it always tries to do all three, but.
Then it's the next Thursday.
That is what we've been, what, what we've been, we've been invited to. So we'll follow up and see.
Yeah, we have a little clarity.
You got it. So um, we still have more on our agenda, so.
Just really looking before we can, I thought, I wanna, I wanna thank you for thanking us, um, because it's, it's, you're absolutely right. And then you can thank you. And 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 it's hard to kind of close out the whole, all the budget situation, if I say like, you know, I say this all the time, like, every meeting, it seems like I, I'm casting a yes vote for something that is, is diametrically opposed to my family. I, I, I feel like I'm constantly voting something that's going to financially hurt me or educationally hurt my children. Because it's just what we have to do and it's, unfortunately, it's the best for, you know, best for the town. Um, so it's not an easy position, um and it is nice to hear thank you sometimes. Appreciate that.
So we do have more on the agenda. Um, you guys are all, you know, of course welcome to stay and listen, but we're not offended if people need to get home. Um but I do wanna thank you all for coming, it does mean a lot to have.
Seven fifty-six.
Yeah, maybe we'll just take a quick break.
At the end of the break?
Yeah.
If you're doing anything, I'm gonna say.
Hold on, Danny. Alright, can we change, can we just do the community problem first? So Danny, if you would be willing to touch the bottom, the bottom versus the top.
Good evening. Hopefully this will be on a lot lighter note than, I'm sad to see you guys go through. Uh, my name's Joseph Paul. I've been running Second Nature Farm here in town for five years as of this month. Uh I am a resident of the farm, nine Harv Street.
So we're neighbors.
We are neighbors.
No. We only say hi, but we've never done.
So there's a little back history about this myself, uh and what's going on in town here. So I am the last commercial vegetable farmer left in town. I was currently on the crane farm, which is up for sale. It's not sort of a most around town, felt that, but um currently we, our lease is no longer there and the town has extended us the opportunity to use Rose Farm. These are some of our roaming practices retained from chemicals. We're a basically an uncertified organic operation. Uh a lot of our community outreach in the past has been with food insecurity and Heather Food Pantry is a pantry that caters to the normal people here. Uh so that's one of the donors that donated a lot of food to. Uh they're able to service the community weekly as opposed to our guidance here in town just by. So we're just, we are a community-based operation. Uh, some more interesting things to hear. Uh so Rose Farm is the property behind the JCS. JCS school was actually built on Rose Farm. Rose Farm was a old self-help grant that came into the community to support agriculture way back when.
So, when you say it's behind the school, are you talking like behind the softball field area?
So if, so the elementary school's here and there are court fields behind the school.
That's ours.
And aerial helps, there is an area.
It's actually by.
So what I am here asking the commission for is to build a community garden. Conservation has granted Second Nature Farm the use of Rose Farm. And all, all borders, it's already just Rose Farm. And the community has long time been asking for a community garden. And what better for someone in the community who is a agricultural person to provide a service back to the community. The unfortunate thing to Rose Farm is it has very limited access. It's a beautiful hidden little gem in our community that most people have never walked on. Uh, and if we were able to get some permission from the school to access where our pink line is here and there's potential for Roswell Building back there, but this is just general basic gathering information such as. Uh because there are some things that have to happen here for this thing, like. We did, I discussed with Mr. Niel and Wade the other day and we had a small discussion about some of the options here and that was when a defense possibly could come up to denote some of the areas. After that meeting, I had met with the police department to see if they were certain there. And their concern was, yes, we definitely need a visual separation to know where one operation begins and one operation ends. And we say, like I said, this is a, this is very preliminary for the community garden. But we're asking it as a, this is not a cost to the school system. This, this is a good thing for the. And also this would grant many opportunities for staff and students to have access to Second Nature Farm, you know, our resources and community garden areas for education.
So, I don't know. I think my first point, like what kind of road are we talking, like a two-way road or like a far derved road?
It would be a dirt surface or gravel surface, loose gravel surface, something that Stormwater Act doesn't have to, so we don't deal with capturing water and sending it in all kinds of places and treating it. Natural coverage. So in so doing, that, it definitely would need to be able to pass in two directions. Uh it's a, you know, we're looking at trying to find the safest way to. And obviously there are operations, which I didn't realize, we have access to a community place right here in town, the Tri-Centennial Park, I'll run here. Which I didn't realize there wasn't access through the school to get to that. So we're here kind of gathering information to see what your take on gaining access through here before we move forward with any more planning. This purple square there, rectangle, whatever, is that a park? That denotes a parking lot. So we're between ten to thirty parking spaces, handicap. You know, all of the guidelines that will need to be met, even though I am acting as a liaison in this with a steward. It will, this is a, this is a community project, so it's not a Joe project or Second Nature Farm. We're doing this for community access.
I guess, I question, when you go into JCS and go around, like, oh, yeah, like, is that one way coming out of that parking lot or is that?
It is not. So that's, that's the entrance you would, you would enter in off of North Worcester Street. Um, it is not one-way, um, but you know, Dr. Marcus and I have had a few conversations and I've said to Joe, um, some of the concerns I have are, um, number one with the fence, that you wanna make sure that there's a clear delineation and that students, um, because we have education classes out there um for, you know, field days, things like that, we wanna make sure that there is a clear division between where our school property is and where, where room is. Um and the other concern that Joe and I spoke about, Dr. Marcus and I spoke about was access during the school day. Um which, you know, I think that there's something that we really have to have a conversation about. Um, for those of you who currently have students at JCS, you know how crazy that parking lot in that driveway is. Um be, really between like eight, eight fifteen and nine fifteen in the morning and probably two fifteen like almost four in the afternoon between preschool and the buses and how, how late they come sometimes. Um, I would be concerned about a lot of additional traffic at that time of the day. So I think that, you know, if there's an opportunity for us to kind of take a look at what some guidelines would be, um, to go there.
So, I guess my other question, if you can farm on this land, how, how are you gaining access to?
My access point is further back and is a very long agricultural road.
Like your equipment's not coming down here through this area more than likely, other than.
The farm access is going to be through the here.
Okay.
Could we access through here? Occasionally, yes, but no, mainly our access is, is beyond. I don't know how much traffic you think a farmer will cause. We're probably gonna enter probably two to three times a day as a farmer.
Having worked on a farm, I know this.
We don't, we.
But I, I, but I know a community garden could be.
A community garden is, obviously, this is going to end this rule, also be an access point for the entire conservation land. This is not a limited access, this is a community property. We're asking to come from a public property to a public.
So people could come down and start there, they could walk around.
Absolutely.
Or they'll be able to buy things that are growing.
Public access.
Yeah.
It is entirely a public access situation. This is not a one-you situation, this is a community access. And, you know, and also in town, we do also have a school that has ball fields along a road. So, you know, there are situations in town here where we have traveling along a athletic.
And so typically, we have very clear signage about accessing, um, like the fields at the high school are not allowed to be accessed during the school day.
Right.
Um, across from LGN, it's typically not an issue that school gets out at two o'clock, that practice is later in the day. Um, Tricentennial, they can also enter from the, from one twenty-three, that access road was put in just last spring. Um actually to ease the flow of traffic at more, when they go out to take that right as you're very familiar with.
The public, public also is able to access from that one through the school. So this is not something that's, you know, foreign to what could potentially happen on public property. So why can't, why couldn't the access road be where you access right now? It is so narrow. Okay, it is one-way and there are, there are some culverts in there, it's just not, it's a very dangerous situation. It's a very dangerous situation to have traffic flow in that and also where the entrance is. It's not very wide, visibility down the road is very restricted. And this obviously will have great visibility.
That was my next question, is I'm not assuming there's gonna be too much stuff going on after hours, if you will, in terms of sales or whatever, or like is there gonna be lights out there? Lighting that road up or are you looking?
No, we're not, this is, this is. Yeah, this is a typical public access situation. Daylight hours, gone down the road, you know, not accessible at other times. The other beauty to this is as we're on the property, it is also going to add another access point for police and fire. In a, just another situation where they'll be able to get to the back of these structures from an unrestricted way because the farm, as we get through here, there'll be an unrestricted path. Right now, if it could get a police car down, they're not going to get a emergency vehicle. As we're on property, it will allow for an emergency vehicle situation because it will be open enough for an emergency vehicle travel down. So it's giving another option for those services too.
Have you got any feedback on the, uh, about reserve?
It's public property, so we have not gone that far. Um, we actually do not need, that as it being public property. It is, you know, these, these properties are public, they're publicly accessible.
So would we, it, it provides information.
At this point, we're looking for information, we're looking to see, what are your objections? So we can answer the objections and come back to you for permission for this project.
And I, I think, the only thing with me, and I think we've talked about it, is just, you know, school day access and be nuts, you know, but people just have to be aware.
And we can, and obviously like anything else. And we can, and obviously like anything else in towns, we can add signs along there. There's going to be a kiosk on the property. You know, we can post information just as the school posted information. This is, like I said, this is for our, well, public.
When do you think you want to, like, when are you moving out of the farm? Like, what's your timeframe?
Uh we will be on the farm the day after town meeting.
Okay.
We're waiting for the approval of the police.
Well, sure.
I mean, I just, my two cents here was I do like the fence idea. I would wrap that fence all the way straight up past the. Uh softball field, baseball.
The softball field has a fence here. Yeah, there is a, it's fence. So with the section of ways that we can.
Correct.
The fence beyond.
Correct, but you can still easily access from your parking lot. You can simply one jump over the fence or two, walk around and walk right to the back of J C S.
There is fencing. Uh throughout this area, if you go.
This is the fence here, right?
There's, yeah.
There is this fence needs to go all the way to this point at least where no one can get in. Because if you leave this open, they can walk around.
And that will be faster here, yeah.
Nick, also, there, that, there's no fence behind the playground either. It goes straight to the woods.
Yes, there's no fence.
Huge traffic down. The, the back of the playground does not have a fence.
But that's correct. So what I'm saying is, is if you're in this parking lot, this fence is really doing nothing besides keeping cars and.
Well, that, this is the property. This is what we're saying this fence is to do, is to get out the travel. But we're never going to stop any, anyone from entering property. We don't gate the entrances of our schools. We don't. You know, our security places in our school system start out at front doors. That's why we have.
Yeah, we, we.
Security.
Yeah, we, yeah. Cause I, yes, I understand.
This is public area. There's existing public assets.
So I understand that, but not with cars. Do you have to be on foot?
Yeah, so the vehicles will not leave this area. There will be barriers and a gate. So there's an emergency way through here. But there will be barriers with that system. So a vehicle cannot travel.
I mean, we don't, we don't allow, we don't allow our kids during the school day to go play on playground. For like if I wanted to take, my kids are up sick and I want to go play basketball behind the court, behind the thing during the school day, we don't allow kids to go back there to do that. Why the hell would we allow a bunch of citizens with, with no fence or nothing? That makes no sense.
But we don't have a fence now.
That's what I'm saying. If we're going to have people who's not supposed to be on our school grounds, we better try to keep them out of it.
You, you do have a sign that says that you're not supposed to be on school property.
Yeah.
And I'm not asking that is concerned. We're not asking to access the school property.
No, he, he's not, he's not saying, he's, he's arguing with someone parking in the paint and walking through the back school.
What is the difference from them parking in the front driveway, walking in school?
Cause we have security measures in place out of school. Where if kids playing on the playground out here.
Correct.
Right now, there's really no access to get back there. If we're getting a road, now there is access to get back there. Makes sense? Okay.
I think, uh, uh, if somebody parks in a parking lot, you can walk around the left side of the building. There's nothing stopping anybody.
No, it's gated. It's gated. And fast.
To the, I haven't ever seen it. After like, after drop off in the morning.
I did it. Someone on foot.
It's like, oh, are you worried about a car accessing that?
I'm worried about someone being able to go out to a back parking lot where there's no supervision, walks up like the front of schools. With no fence. Someone just goes there, I knew. Walks past the softball field not to get directly to our playground with no cameras, nothing out there because we don't have anything out there.
My question is, do we have cameras at L G on the fields? I, I don't know. Do we have? I'm just curious.
But did, L G's.
The little wheel next to us? That's our property.
No, but what else? But I say, I just extend the fence a little, a few hundred feet or whatever, like all the way through it, as far as we can go. Where then it is thick woods and everything else and then we're going to have to try to deal with it, I guess. I don't know.
And you were, the fence between woods and that, where is, I mean.
Again, some.
I'm not, I'm not sure where you're.
I think he's worried about someone with bad intentions being in a. Get, get that to that point.
We, in a public setting already, if they're coming in, there's, they can come in. It is a.
Mark, do you have anything to say?
All right, I'll have you recognized, thank you. Um, I, I, uh, as principal in the building, um. Absolutely support the concept of making use of the farm and having, uh, opportunities for the students to learn. Supporting the community in, in any way that we can to have the farm. Uh being used in different ways and for the community and educational purposes and things like that. But there are a lot of things that we have to figure out before, uh. Of this plan is ready to go. Um and I think Mr. Steiger brought an incredibly important one about safety. There isn't anything more important than that for me. Uh and there are lots of safety concerns that I have about that kind of a, a access. Um there is a drawing that you put up, um it has the purple. Uh line, it can't go from right there. There's a large swell right, uh, at the. Uh at the, uh, you can't just stand here.
And there is any swell here.
Alright, so you, so you, and that is wet. So that swell right now is, is got water in it. Um and it's, and I don't know if it's part of the water, that's also part of the wetland that runs along the access road. Um but it's not, you know, it's not something that you can just open the fence and, and have a road go right through. You're gonna have to do some kind of construction or whatever in order to make that work. Um the fence, uh, concept I think is incredibly important. Uh and I would see, uh, again, the importance of having a fence wrapped all the way around. That, that, that whole area should be fenced anyway. Our fence right now goes out to the property line of the butters. Uh and all the way back. Um and if we were going to do something like this, we'd have to seriously consider that. We also want to look at water and the water resources and where that's coming from. Um along with lots of other things, I think that.
Current, our, our water resources, all of those things will be provided through the access on the conservation. That will not be coming through the school system. All of that will be self-contained on conservation.
So I'm assuming for this whole project, and I know, you know, the farm is one part of, you know, your livelihood.
But the farm is already all set. What we're do, what we're trying to do is create a community garden area.
I'm assuming with this road, uh, assuming an engineer has to go out there and do all, like, all of that work has, like, we can't just say. Here's a truckload of gravel, here's our road. Like, it has to be a deliberate, you know, engineer road.
There can be some, there certainly can be some.
Yeah, I'm not, like I said, I, I just have a lot more questions, I guess, but. About totally against Miami, but my concern is you're going to have a parking lot in the back of the building. Where we have five-year-olds playing on the fields. Which, well, I get, I get it. The wrong folks comes up. Well, well, they come through the, they work through the farm anyway, I get it. But you're giving the ability to, we're, we're opening up our, our students to a potential issue. We're having a parking lot back there with no security measure. So. It's almost parked here. There's equal security. There's a gate there. Yes, there's a gate to the back of that road.
This is why.
No, it's not. It's not.
Fence all the way across now?
Yeah, yeah, and it's fence and with that burden, well, whatever, if you wrap around the building, there's a swing gate that opens for traffic. And I don't know, hopefully it gets shut during the day, but during the day it's shut and blocked. So therefore, again. Someone jump over the fence? Absolutely. You're not stopping it.
We're not. A four-foot fence is not a security.
Which that hasn't been before. Why can't it be?
Well, well, I mean, there's not a piece of property here in town that we have a place like that.
Sure.
I, I'm just.
Okay, I, I get it, I get it. I think that, from our standpoint, yes, I think the idea behind this, I, I don't think you're going to get, that would be too much resistance, to be honest. There's just going to have to be a very good plan in place that we're going to make an access road. The, the first and foremost thing is the safety of our students. And then that's somewhere, once that question's done and answered, then I think we can get into the other stuff of.
Absolutely. It's not why we're here. And, and we're, I'm asking you, what are your safety access? Where are they? So we can address them.
Okay, so the other piece, if I may, is that you are opening up traffic to. Uh basically our parking lot. So. Whether it's during drop-off and pickup, uh, at those hours, or it's during the regular day, all of a sudden we're introducing. A number of cars that are going to be driving up and back. Um anytime that somebody comes on a property right now, we had, uh, uh, Len, uh, what's called Mark, Landmark.
Yes.
Came today to work on the baseball fields. I got three walkie-talkie calls within a minute. You know, Dr. Marks, Dr. Marks, there are people on the, on the, Doc, where we go, oh, should we pull the kids inside? What do we do? So we are unbelievably security conscious. And if we're worried about three guys that are supposed to be there, that were given passes and ready to go. And we're introducing something that's much more wide open, again, I'm, I, as I said before, I'm not opposed to the use of the farm. I think a community farm is a great idea and how, how we can support it, I think we should. But we have to come up with lots of thinking about how this is going to work before we. Make a decision. That's my opinion.
Like I say, this is, this is a gap information gathering session. We're looking for those specific factors so they can be addressed.
Well, I mean, I think to your point, a four-foot fence, I mean, I could probably find my way over one too, but I think. It's a piece of mind to have.
Correct, right. We're, we're not maybe saying that a four-foot fence is not allowed. Back in here, there's nothing there now. There's nothing. And the way to say that, property's been open to the community. For as long as there's a lot of it, don't.
Ironically, I need to know it was not my property and I'm trying to.
Okay, I mean, like I said, we're trying to do this in a way that is positive for the school.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think in a nutshell, we were worried about, you know, that. So I, I think we're really, we have to be aware of the timing of this. You know, cause I, I'm assuming it's going to be like a dusk to dawn, but, you know, we already have a lot of cars going in and out of that school. Uh to add on potentially, you said twenty to thirty. You know, it's just. We're attracted, you know, and.
Right, there's, there, there's going to be some traffic. Most of this activity is going to be happening when the school is on. There's going to be a small window in the spring and a small window in the fall. These are the extension seasons. Yes. It will be access back there for the public. So yes, there will be some people. We can still continue to access. But I mean, I'm sure, as you know, we have people who park in school, you know, it's always time to do other things all over this. I've been in community, as down my whole life, I've been through the school systems here. I'm aware of this. And all I'm trying to get here is, what are our exact concerns? So we can address them. And fencing is one. It's a signage. Obviously, we have some other concerns about safety, uh, traffic. Didn't seem to be a concern of police department at this time. So we need to discuss these things. It is a public accessible property. There are no laws that you cannot drive on this property at any time. There are some signs, there are suggestions. Just like most of things, but we, unless I'm unaware of something, we haven't passed any law that you can't enter this property.
That's.
Can I clarify? Alright, it's not public property right now. The, where you have the purple line and where you are going to have that road is not. Public property at any time during the day, publicly held property. I can, as the principal superintendent, the school committee can very easily say, no, you can't be on the property. So what you're asking, I think the school committee's opinion or our opinion as the school department. Is can we turn this twelve-foot, fifteen-foot piece of school property into public property?
Cause it's school property right now. It's publicly held, school committee managed. Right, so you're asking.
And, and so as the superintendent or as the principal or as the school committee, we have every right during the day to say.
Correct.
There, there is no one allowed on, on our property. And we, and here's that pretty strictly. And, and so, um, I think perhaps what might be the best option so to move forward is perhaps. Maybe John and Nick, I'm gonna volunteer to. You seem passionate about the topic. Um, could maybe work with Joe to share what our, like maybe the more.
This is, this isn't just a Joe project. This is a community project. This is in.
But if you want to get our concerns and I'd be able to solve those problems. I, I think we're going to have to be able to give the opportunity to write them down and share them with you. Um, and I don't know that.
And I think anyone here, this is, this is, we can certainly, conservation, everything can be mailed right over to conservation. This is, this is going on through, where this is part of a land use problem. This is part of a lot of different things that have gone.
So what other, do you need other permits and approvals to do this?
Well, our process here to get this access way in is through, is basically our level will be. Be school property. So the, the end decision will lie in, you know, at some point us coming back with a vote.
Right.
But, you know, we need to address the issues prior to arriving there because that makes no sense to come back. Why and why, you know?
Yeah, so I think issues that been noted and you take it back to who you need to take it back to, right? And then we have another conversation?
Correct.
Okay.
Providing, like I said, you, you put together a list of issues that can be mailed over, emailed over to John Thomas at Conservation. And we'll address them one by one.
Just, yeah, okay, yeah, perfect. Alright, thanks for coming in.
Back to the grid design.
Alright, hold the fence, Danny. Sorry. I'm not listening to the nice. Go ahead, Jenny.
How you doing?
I told him, you're mad at him.
It's a decent kid.
Uh, see, that was.
See, that's your fault.
That wasn't me. See?
Told you.
You're the common denominator, my friend.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you guys, um, having us back. Um, back, I think in the fall, we did like an overview with P B I S and, uh. We're asked to, you know, sort of come back at this time, um, we have only about an hour and a half, two-hour presentation. It's a really quick review. A really quick update, um, in, in some, uh, data that we've had, uh, we've been able to collect over the. Over the works of the big objects that you were aware of this year. So I'm gonna look at my part very quickly, because you guys have already seen this and I know the play. But this is kind of the history of how P B I S, um, you know, about here in Norton and role that it plays. Um not just in that tier one and now in, in some of our schools, tier two intervention, but also in some of the, um. Mandated, uh, grants and mandated services that we have to provide around discipline. So what these, P B I S is one of the. Uh federum, uh, systems that we can implement, um, to support the discipline. And other, uh, supports we have in place for our students. Uh but more importantly, it's really about building unity, building, uh. Uh corporate behaviors and, and working together with our teaching staff to. Uh speak over the school writing a couple of skills. Um, this is the, uh, this is real quickly is the L G's, um, uh, matrix. You remember we talked about this, so respect your vulnerability and safety, uh, how they go about it. Uh, they do purple hearts. Um, they work both on an individual level and a, uh, classroom level. And they have, uh, towers that they build and then the students get to choose, uh, what's the towers built, the draft, the teachers and staff and other. And each other, um, tends to be the bigger draw for them in terms of reinforcing the behavior. Yeah, okay, um, then we have, uh, the J C S, we use this term tokens, I believe is how they. How they, uh, they reinforce some of the things that we're looking for. And they've done a really nice job of tying, tying their P B I S to their character strong, which is the, uh, the curriculum that we're using. Which is the, uh, the curriculum that we're using to, and right now I believe is a, uh. Perseverance, a work with perseverance and, um, you know, reinforcing those kinds of attempts. And what I like about this is. You know, perseverance for one kid is not the same as somebody else. You really kind of target that to the individuals by grade levels and so forth. Um, and then we have our hashtags, um, Mr. Gagan has left us, but, um, he uses hashtags and Mr. Blower. Uh, to again reinforce their, their, that they're looking to work on. Uh, and they talked pretty, pretty intensely about, um. The different themes that they're working with, um, with their classrooms and their students as well. Um, and if you wanted to make sure we noted that as of, uh, the middle of February, they had two hundred and seventy eight. Good news calls of the day to parents. So students, you know, come down, they get recognized. Parents call them, you know, this is what so and so did, um, and so forth. And I actually hear a lot, um, my position, um. From my special parents, uh, that, that just love that getting those phone calls, uh. And then, um, as you know, the, uh, parent board there has been a big supporter and they have set up the vending machine, the book vending machine. And they've had two hundred and fifteen visits so far to the book vending machine. Uh, I happened to see that the other day when a young lady was turning in her tickets. She was so excited to get this one book that she had just died, yeah. It was a highlight of a, of not so otherwise good day. So I really enjoyed that. Um, the middle school has kind of revamped, um, and reorganized as we talked about, and they do team buckets, um. You go there during lunchtime, you'll see they, they really use that time. They have like a spinner that they use and they, they pull. Um, kids' names from that. It, it actually gets very engaged. So they've been doing a lot of work, um, and their parent board has also been a huge supporter of this initiative. And then, um, the high school, uh, is, we just came back from an internet conference. Uh, a lot of high schools doing this work, um, so we are in the first field full year. Uh, we're working with our students now on trying to kind of tailor what it is that they are looking to both address in terms of behaviors, but also in terms of. How do we reinforce that? What's that look like? Um, and, uh, we've got some really interesting dynamic conversations with them actually just the other day, so. Um, that's kind of, if you real quick hit, um, on what's going on, and now I'm gonna let Eric talk a little bit more about. What we are looking to do and what the, what the data is saying.
Sure, just, just in case you don't know me, my name is Dr. Eric Mackey. I'm a clinical consultant from the May Institute. My training is as a psychologist with focus in school psychology. And my role, uh, since the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty academic year, let's see, year that was. Uh, was, if we all remember, uh, was to support, uh, northern public schools in the rollout and implementation. Uh, PBIS, so I primarily provide a lot of training, technical assistance and coaching to teams within each school. So that they can become the local experts within the building to be able to roll out these social and emotional behavioral efforts. So what we know from, uh, PBIS is just maybe a little bit of review, but just kind of timely, but as we're talking about things like budgets and things along those lines. Is when we do PBIS as it's designed, positive behavior and dimensions and sports, we get these positive outcomes such as. Reduced exclusionary discipline. So we're not seeing as many students getting sent out of, of the school. We see improved testing scores such as, uh, like, oh, MCAS scores, we see improvements, uh, there. We see. Better equity as far as who's receiving, uh, office discipline referrals. We also see improved teacher, uh, how, such as reduced, uh, turnover and reception of school climate. As well as feelings of efficacy, so feeling like they can do their job in order to be able to educate. As you can imagine, these have financial lines. Students are getting, um, suspended over and over and actively sent out of district. That costs money to just talk about that a lot. PBIS has been shown to be able to reduce some of the, uh, some of that sending out of students out of the district. In order to do PBIS, oops, like, I'm clicking on one thing again. It's what time on the, on the Thursday? Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so part of, part of my work is working with teams and looking at data. Uh, looking at data to see, are we doing PBIS as it's designed so that we can get to those desirable outcomes that I, I was just talking about? And are we getting those outcomes? So the first thing I'm gonna talk about is fidelity. Uh, and at least once a year with the team, we go through what we call a fidelity inventory. Scoring to school as far as how we're doing and rolling out, uh, the framework. What we find is when we're at about seventy percent, that's generally considered fidelity or sufficient fidelity to say. We should be getting those outcomes, uh, that we're expecting. Also, it's a good key to say, okay, we might be able to continue building our, building our structures. Uh, so what you see here are the scores for the elementary schools are all clustered together over the past three years. What you see is their fidelity has been over seventy percent for the past three years, which is fantastic. To the right, you see the secondary school. So you see the, uh, middle school, uh, first, it's, uh, they were implemented first and then you see. Combination of middle school and high school together. As you can see, we're building a fidelity on that side, on the secondary side. But we're not quite at that fidelity point yet. Hoping to get there soon. Uh, it's true with continued support, but we need to continue to, uh, support them in, in order for that to happen. Now I'm gonna shift towards outcomes. So what is it that, thank you for that one. I'm so used to everything.
I'll do that.
So as far as outcomes, I'm gonna focus in on office discipline referrals. So these are the situations where a student, um, may. Do a behavior, undesirable behavior multiple times. Like maybe they're annoying up here or they're calling out or. And they're not responding to a teacher's attempts to, uh, redirect. That, that would get documented and land in this digital system that helps us to analyze those results. We're al, we're also taking a look at times where students are getting sent out of class due to their behavior. Maybe they've been aggressive. Or they're absolutely unredirectable. Maybe they need to get sent to the principal, the vice principal. That's also documented within this switch system, school-wide information system. And what that's, that computer system allows us to do is to take a look at the, the data and the patterns to get a sense of. What's happening schoolwide as far as patterns of behavior, what's happening grade wide as far as, uh, patterns of behavior? And what's happening at the individual school, which as you can imagine can be really helpful when we're trying to get ahead of behaviors. Versus trying to fix them on, on the backend.
So for, for something like that, if it's a digital system, would that fall next to, of their career?
That is part of the record.
Well, my thought process real quick was if this student is struggling from like twelve thirty to one every day, then.
That's exactly, that's exactly. I, there's lots of different ways to use it. But one of the things you see is that's actually how we usually, when you think about it from either a school justice council or again, or at the ECDA perspective. Um, or we've been administering, so I see both on the individual level, but you also get to see at the, at the group. Teach, you know, the group level or the, um, schoolwide level. So you can address it. It's not always about addressing just the child, right? Sometimes it's about addressing the environment or how we're going about it. It also is something we can use for. Uh, when we do like our FPAs, it, it speeds up that process. So it makes our work with our school adjustment councils, our ECDAs way more efficient in effect. Cause we have the data, we don't spend weeks gathering.
Just having a little question about that, the, the digital program. Um, so. Just so I'm like, can wrap my frame around this one, um, like if, uh. Let's say first grade teacher is teaching a lesson and a student talks out in class. Redirect whatever, you know, and then finally the teacher's like, okay, you know what? So and so, I need you to go to your seat. It's like you're a little on the rough, let's say. Does she then have to go back and put that information in? Or is that sort of not what you're talking about as far as, like, of behavior? I hasn't tried.
Yeah, I think more, I think typically, well, you can drill down that, I'm over, I'm really kind of more, a little bit larger.
So like they're fully got an incident report or they have to do, they have to go to the next level type.
Um, yeah, I, I don't. I haven't looked at that data in the last couple of days. I just looked at the middle school data and they do, like they call them minors and majors in this. So they actually do track the classroom setting, the mi, some of the minors, it's not all.
They need to be, you know, certain threshold in order to call by you for documenting that minor, because we really wanna overwhelm teachers.
Well, that was my, that was my. The teachers to then have to go to this.
It's something, you know, that we might be looking at in terms of asking, you know, like I say, it's more efficient. It, there might be something that we would be asking them to use as you always, like, you know, an extra circle of the blessings and the minuses. Uh, this discussion for us digitally. And then from the office referral perspective, it's just documenting in a, in a way that. My graph follow, actually look at.
And I think too, and because I've been doing this work previously, uh, when we started these conversations at the elementary level. Actually led to a lot of really great conversations about what are things that teachers should be managing in the classroom? And what are the things that are at that next level that warrants, um, an officer referral? And it, it led to such great dialogue amongst colleagues to be like, oh, no, I don't know that. Like, like that's, to me, that's more than minor. Um, so that was actually really helpful for starting this process.
Those conversations have led towards consistency across the teachers. If one's concentrating or one, or one behavior or other is not that confusing for, for a student. And they're not gonna know what to do from context, they might attempt to split staff or teachers if they're having that. Sure, so again, back to those outcomes, what are we getting out of, uh, PBIS? This is a graphic that's technically all the triangle report, but it's a rectangle. Because we're, it's basically a triangle stretched out over, uh, uh, over years. And the way this is broken down is those who, those things, the percentage of students who are zero to one referrals are considered to be in the green. Uh, some might say that those are the ones who are responding to our universal strategies or, or. Percentage of students who are receiving two to five referrals, that's in the yellow, those are students who may benefit from tier two. I don't say that they must have it, but we might warrant some further investigation to see if they might benefit from it. And then the red are those students, the percentage of students who receive six or more referrals. Those are students that we say, you know, it might benefit. From some individualized supports, like individual, I have to say, individual behavior plan or councils, like that. The hope is that we see the majority green, right? We want the majority of our students to be receiving. One or less referrals over the, over the course of the year. What you see here, uh, with. Thank you, JCS. Um, what you see here is the majority is green. That's the desired effect. That's what we want. We want. I keep telling teams that I work with, we want a broadly green, broadly green, broadly green. We want our, our green to be at least eighty percent or above, and that's what we're seeing here. We can actually, for times, kind of scroll through it and see, uh, for Norris, majority, majority green. Do you see some of that tier two in there? But especially in the most recent year, you see it's majority, majority green. Same thing for yellow. Same thing for, um, middle school. So this is how we track, uh, progress to make sure from year to year. That we're reaching that goal of at least eighty percent in that who are responding to those universal.
He had a lot of these, cause I feel like this data is. Like the best, simply because when you look at this, we're looking at it from eighteen, nineteen. If our kid were already doing this before we put in PBIS and we were already bottom row in the green, this really hasn't helped us necessarily. Where I come back and there's the data, or we have to have some.
So, and, and the other thing to consider too, and I was thinking about this specifically for Norton Middle School. Was how much is actually being reported, right? So what were things, right? So what, what was being reported initially? So in, the middle school has kind of had to relaunch PBIS. So I would be willing to, you know, wager. That they weren't putting in those discipline referrals. Or they were writing a note to the administration instead of putting things in and writing, that it's actually been documented. So the data almost looks like it, it's going backwards, but instead it's just actually, it's, it's more accurate, it's.
But then I think that Vanessa's point, when we talk about with that MCAS test, if you have a really bad grade of second grade. Tolls, let's just say. One year, it's gonna be, you might have more referrals and the thing does this, then all of a sudden you get to fifth grade and you see the middle school or whatever, the other school's not falling down, so on and so forth. So like. We're looking at this, I mean, it looks like, you know, making this number up, but so many schools, well over ninety-five percent of our kids have less than one offender. Uh, yours looks like well over ninety percent of our kids. You know, like, what were our numbers beforehand? That is like, are we actually. Seeing something from PBIS, I just.
I would say we weren't tracking any of it.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, I mean, I think there was no historical data. So I agree, right? There's no historical data, but I think. The other point is it's just not about historical data, it's about drilling down. So I use this just within my own two, kind of two departments or whatever I have. Um, I drill down a lot with staff, um, and, and I think actually Denise, it would have done a really nice job of doing this. At his, at his different, um, in his different teams. To kind of look at like, okay, where, where, not just who, right? Where, when and how are we seeing certain behaviors occurring? And how are we then addressing them, both from an adult perspective as well as individually? But we may be addressing some of these kids individually, alright? Um, but then I think the other bigger pieces we're looking at. You know, people get wrapped up in the reinforcement because it's kind of a pretty thick of a guess. Um, but to me, that's something most important part in all my training and I, I did this. Prior to coming here, it's about the environment, about changing the environment, making sure that we're, okay, are we. Uh, should we be taking a look at how we're doing dismissal? Because a lot of our problems coming out of dismissal. What are we doing in the cafeteria? Like that was a targeted area for, for middle school. I know they did a lot of work around their cafeteria. Um, and not to, not to squash, you know, having a good time at the cafeteria, but how do you actually manage it? Like where do you cross the line? You know, does it, being loud is, is one thing, smashing, you know. Yeah, or, or, well, probably was a different thing, right? So those are the kinds of ways that we utilize it. Um, and then again, I think having some, um, consistent ways of acknowledging students when they're, when they're doing the right thing. When I'm, again, one of my struggles when I was a school adjustment counselor, it's always like, I felt like you're focusing on. A lot of times on the kids who are not engaged in the appropriate behaviors and you're starting to get those kids if you're not, we wanna make sure we acknowledge all of it. Here's a take effort, um, and then, you know, so, and then teachers can look at it different too and look at, say, okay. Where, where, I feel like we're struggling as we come back recess. Does the data show that? Yeah, it does. Okay. Let's see that timeframe, what can we do differently? We work with administrators or take it to different hotels, they work with their teams or coaches. To try to figure out a way to address that. Really way to make sure that we're utilizing data to address what we think we might be seeing. Um, and then sometimes it's, it's, it's not like some, I've been in schools where. You hear everybody's out of control, right? The whole school's out of control. And then you utilize the data and you're like, no, let's take these. Seven or eight students that are being more disruptive, you take them home. The data really shows that the school itself is not out of control, right? So you have to address those tier two, tier three. So to me, it offers a variety, at each level is offering us the ability to do some, some drill down work. Rather than having conversations.
So what we have in terms of consistency, cause my first thought as we're going through this is. In this school and the high school, the kids are moving around.
Yes.
So if you have a teacher that's. Lack of, is a little bit more laid back and maybe isn't doing the reporting versus you have a teacher that's gonna report everything. How do we, how do we look at a data set like that, whether it's human, a human element in the report?
You ask a great question. And thankfully, there are limited roles as far as who can analyze the data. And there are selected individuals who have the ability to dive in and say, look, okay, how are referrals looking for staff? And not so much as a gotcha, uh, but more as a, oh, I see my referrals coming in here. What can I do to support this classroom? Maybe they have construction happening. Maybe it's, it just happens to be a child taking a class. Maybe there's a whole bunch of factors. So we do have the ability to do that kind of analysis. Say, okay, okay, how, how are teachers prepared? Somebody might just be a little bit, uh, giving out more. Figure, uh, referrals, so might be later, but it's an opportunity for observation, for supervision, for, for feedback. That also look at the individual student.
Say, yeah, is it really like. Is it that Dan's easier than Nick is? Or is it that. That kid likes your class for whatever reason more than he likes your, his class. So, you know, um, so I mean, those are the kinds of things. It, it, sometimes it's what, what the data leads you to discuss, not necessarily always with the data.
So.
Yeah, you have to take the data and, like any data, right? You have to take the data and then look at it, break it down and talk about it and have rational discussions about. You have to take the data and then look at it, break it down and talk about it and have rational discussions about, okay, what does this mean? Um you you know, and you have to kind of think about what it means.
Do we have any defect from teachers on their thoughts across three levels? About you, like about the implementation of PBIS and also students, like that, how do the students feel, are they?
So the, I'll be honest, right now, the the, uh I think the elementary for the most part, again, it's absolutely correct, but you're looking for eighty percent fidelity and that's what we we got there. So that's part of that. Um we hear good things from students, I mean, you know, at the elementary and the middle school, the middle school actually very excited to have it back, I see it when you go in there. We are, you know, we're we're we have some growing pains in the high school. Um I have some good feedback and then it's like, hmm, I don't like it this way. So we're talking about that and like anything else, this is a process. Um not a lot of people do the high school, so it's something we're trying to implement, it's a way of addressing behaviors. It's not gonna address all behaviors, it's not the be all, end all, but it's definitely a way to, I was in a. Brian and I were in a uh AP class the other day and they were presenting us all kinds of different scenarios. Uh one of the things that came up was SCL and PBIS. And it was interesting, the initial kind of response, they said, well, no, this is kind of, ah, no, I feel like it's baby. And then we talked about incentives and reinforcement, how we all get reinforcement. And they kind of came around, oh, okay, we're getting it, we're on it. So I think there's some of that. Is it gonna help for all kids? No, like it's not, no, it's just, that's why we have tier two, tier three. Um and then if the elementary is starting to to implement the tier two process, which is much more structured, check ins with kids. Uh it's a way to be more efficient and effective with my my staff, you know, my counseling staff, I need my, I need CPAs and some others that makes it more efficient and effective. Um because we can kind of drill down quicker, see what we're at, we're looking at, we also see turnaround quicker, you know, in terms of those tier two. This is it, you know, let's do this for six weeks, just like any other, like from a curriculums perspective, are we seeing it? I mean, I'll I'll just add to that, that uh one of the major drivers of PBIS is having a representative team. So each school has their own team, that includes teachers, special ed, regular ed, counselors, mental health, so that there's a representative. Uh viewpoint there, it's not just a couple of people draining something up. And they are, they are individually, if represent, uh they're here, so you're like, how is this impacted by the teachers? There's a direct line to the teachers, one person can't represent everybody, at least there's some representation there and they're constantly see feedback on their products. You mentioned of other students, one of the best practices, especially at middle school and high school, is have a have at least a student on the team, not have your own, your own team. Uh of students to give that kind of feedback, is what we find with PBIS at the secondary level, is if you don't have that student buy-in, you don't have that student buy-in, it kind of sucks. So they very wisely, especially I think this high school has seen, has students represented on the team, helping them to build their framework.
And I would think at like the middle and high school level, like if if there's someone that's constantly interrupting class, those kids are more than likely going to have an opinion to bring to somebody because it's there. Like if they say, you know, Johnny's constantly interrupting class, but we're not seeing any interventions, the students at the level probably be like. Can someone do something about this kid, I'm trying, you know, trying my best and I'm I'm getting distracted because, you know, it's like the old saying, one kid can extract twenty-five, you know? So I I I think hopefully they're buying at the secondary level because they know this can affect their educational opportunity.
Yeah, I think there's still, again, for for year, really year one into the high school and, you know, we were at, we're 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 leading like we do a lot. We're leading kind of that charge, you know, that's why we're asked to come speak about it. Um because at that secondary level, I've done it in a thirty day school, it's a little different than doing it in a general ed high school. Um but I I I personally think the data is some of the most important pieces. You know, like, there's there's always issues with data, um but the way you approach the data and the way our teams approach the data is with a little bit of skepticism. It's not like, oh, look at that, isn't that great, or look at that, that means everything, no, let's really look at it from a deeper dive. Um and we we we're running, we gotta get better at that, there's no two ways around.
Sorry, I just, my last piece of this, obviously we want eighty percent green, whatever percent we want, we also want a hundred percent. But like, I guess from the Solvies, it looks like pretty standard across the board in five years. Again, COVID was huge interruption. Uh but again, if you look at eighteen nineteen to twenty-two, twenty-three, they look pretty similar, maybe one or two differences. Norris with PBIS seems to be getting better. And then yellow and North Middle School seem to be getting a little worse, is that how we're, should be reading it?
And I think that's where it's really important to consider the variation in in data and think about, okay, we're just just giving the data. How consistent are they in, what's going on with them, with the context, since they've been turnover within tools, so everything has to be. That it, exactly, um so say that this is the NLDL as far as the effectiveness of of PBIS, I would not say that I would rest everything on on this data. I think it's important to also take a look at, when we have the universal stream, what is, what is that? What are, what are things for internalizing students who might not be flipping over chairs or flipping the bird, but who might be struggling on their own? So then I would think about also staff turnover, is that, I was out, sorry, we only have, we only have this uh data available. Kind of it'd be interesting to look at those other outcomes that we're hoping to see from PBIS.
Oh, I think that's what my next piece is like, what, what other data that we just get? So they're, I just kind of kind of compared to the forecast stuff, it's like, it's not the adult data, you know, what else can we tangibly see that we can see as a five of us to look at and say, hey? This is actually working, you know, like maybe the yellows went from, hey, we're moving a kid from a class to bed to, three years ago, we had kids throwing chairs. That's a better, you know, it's it's a step in the right direction.
And I think, you know, there, again, I think that they, that the yellow, I actually, even though the data looks a little different, I would say it's actually more consistent in being used. You know, in a, in a better way in terms of um how they're implementing it. So some of that, you know, you have to kind of look at what's going on in the in the individual setting. And to be honest, there's, the behaviors are more challenging that we're seeing than we saw prior to COVID, right? So I actually, again, I think it's implementation, I think in John's case, some of the stuff that John's put in there. I don't know how accurate that data was prior to for John coming in, to be honest.
To your point too, that you said earlier, if you look at, you know, if you put up the yell and then, you know, JCS and LG, it could be that great level. Yeah, so so this data, the twenty-one, twenty.
We can break this down in lots of different ways, which we, which we do, I mean, we know there's certain grade levels. Are struggling, right? And so we're trying to regress that okay, I've also seen grade levels um that have struggled and then have improved, right? So, you know, there's multiple factors that get get involved, um you know, in in breaking down the data.
So I'm by no means a PBIS implementation specialist. I have your many hats. It is certainly not in my database, um however, I did have very decent at digesting data. And so I guess, I'll ask you, my first question is, I notice we have a triangle, or or I already accept the high school?
Yes, because it's their first year of.
Okay, so we don't have data yet, yeah. Um so. I I actually have a couple of problems with what we're looking at. Uh the the first of which is. And again, forgive me if I don't understand the struggle, but when you talk about fidelity and you talk about saying, okay, we implement this program and these are the expectations. And do we see the expectations we think we do? How do you prove causation? Are you proving that your program is actually by their either improving that or et cetera?
Oh, that's a great, that's a great question, that's one of the challenges, especially in school scenarios, because we can't, can't always turn it into an experiment. Where we have that clear conditional group or we have that clear before and after. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have access to that before and after data to be able to show you that clear kind of line, defining line to say, okay, so when we started doing uh PBIS, these are the changes, um we we basically started tracking the data as soon as we started.
Right, but I don't even, I don't think it's even, it's even that simple to say, okay, prior to and post, because you you don't wanna, you don't wanna confuse causation and correlation, right? Like, so. I mean, the reality is here, COVID could be a causation for something and we're saying, oh, look, the program is doing this or not doing this or whatever. You know, in um twenty twenty twenty-one, when kids all know, you know, maybe there's there's less, you know, and all of a sudden, instead of instead of interrupting, they're just, and they're like, oh, no.
The phrasing of this is interesting, right? I can't say PBIS caused this, I can't say it did this, I can say it may have contributed, there's a lot of factors that I said it could be.
And and this is why I'm not sure we we really have anything yet, and this is not to say that PBIS is is, I'm not sensing it, but I'm saying, I don't think we really show that we have anything yet at all. In fact, I would actually, like, if you look at some of these ones where the data starts with very few referrals and increases, those are likely the most, most accurate, right? Because like, like any, anything, as you do it for a longer and longer period of time, you get better at it, right? So the teachers who in the first year are like, is that a referral, I don't know, whatever, by the fifth year, they are referring, it's like, that's a referral, that's a referral. So you should actually see that progression where it actually increases, I hate to say that, but it it's the reality of data, right? So and they kind of bring it back to what what Nick said, I'm not sure what to do with the data when I see it and I say, okay, you know, uh for the, I think for the yellow, we had five years, we had five years, it's two years school. So I'm not sure what I say away from that, you know what I mean, like, it's, okay, is it? Is, if 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 the yell went from a massive yell I read to shrunk down to almost nothing, that would actually tell me, not that this is necessarily, it would tell me, there's a completely different cohort of kids in here. So I I I don't know what's take away from this, and again, I'm not trying to be dismissive of the program, no. I'm just saying, like, I I don't think this data really, if I'm being quite honest with you, I don't think data shows us anything yet. And 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 it may never, quite honestly. So I guess it sort of goes back to my original question of, how do you know that PBIS is causation and and not just simply just something else sits in the background?
Well, I mean, I think from a, from a scientific standpoint, which is not our, that's not what I think, you look at research, you get like a deep dive into research. There is some, it's one of the most researched programs out there in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. Um, you know, we look at it and I look at it in different ways. I think that the value to this is not necessarily year to year, a couple of that's nice to look at. I use it, we use it, I think, and I think if we think more MPS, we're gonna have, I MPS has a brand piece more of that. So looking at the data, or back to at the year level, like even more brandy level.
Right.
Right, so that's.
So that's probably, that's probably the way we approach this, right? Is not to look at it year over year for the entire, entirety of the cohort to the school. It's hard to say, you know, student next, you know, as a whatever, first grader had five referrals. As a second grader, he had three, and by the time he gets to third, he had one or less. And and this is, this is what PBIS is doing.
Or, or you can, you can look at and say, okay, we put this in with this group of kids, right? And I'm just gonna use the cafeteria, um we had a problem in the cafeteria. We looked at the data, where we tracked, we decided these are the expectations, we taught the expectations directly. I always made some changes to the environment as well. Now we look at the data a month later and say, do we see, do we see improved, right? And it's not just PBIS in terms of, you know, for a fact that, you know, reinforcement, verbal praise, so those kinds of things, there's plenty, plenty, plenty of research that says, yes, that improves. Outcomes for behaviors, like this, there's no, there's no doubting that. I think the value of PBIS goes beyond that, that's the data component. To me, the value of PBIS is also, it's the 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 looking at the the data, it's looking at the environment. Looking at where you're seeing issues within your school and then how do we address that? And sometimes it's not the traditional thing you think. I always, I know it's, I'll be too short, I'm sorry, I'm gonna yell at you. But you guys, you guys are yelling, you guys, you guys, you guys are asking questions. My first example, like when I first started doing this at the thirty-two day school, we spent money every, our first period, not our check-in, right? We have the whole check-in process, that went fine, we were having all these issues, first period, first period, first period. And we kept trying, you know, we tried the behavioral stuff, we tried the reinforcement, first period, we couldn't get past it. But we kept diving into the data, believe it or not, what it came down to is what we, what what it got to us was, wait a minute, what's happening? Let's keep backing this up. And we realized our bands, think about their few dishes, who were showing up and they were all sitting on the bands for like twenty minutes before the staff came and guarded. So all these beefs were happening. But our, our chicken system was so super structured that they didn't have a chance to carry those into the, into that, wasn't until they got to first period. So what we learned with our PBS data and our process of discussion was, we need to call the band company and say, stop getting here so early and change that. And guess what, our data showed that our intervention was correct, because it's not always about, what I like about PBIS, it's not always about just the kids. Yes, I love that aspect, I love recognizing the kids, I love doing all of that, I love that we can target a kid who maybe can't meet, you know, this expectation, but we need him to go. But he's doing it in the same way that his peers are doing it, he's getting reinforced in the same way, I love that. But what I also love is it holds us accountable to look at our systems and how we're implementing our systems. Um is that to me is almost more important? Uh in some ways, it's not the shiny bubbles and, you know, all the things which everybody likes. And, you know, sending home two hundred fifty-six good calls of the day, since, you know, is great, like I think that's fantastic, it's a nice connection. Quite, there are things that we change within our systems. Um and I would like to get there at high school, honestly, because I'd like to be able to deep dive into our systems a little bit more, to figure those pieces out. So it's not as simple sometimes as how people perceive PBIS, it's a much more complex approach to behaviors, expectations, school readiness skills. Perseverance or in those kinds.
And and that's a good answer, because I, the other thing I was worried about with these things that I've gone before is, you know, people, the worst thing you can have is confirmation bias, right? Say, this is what we expect, oh, we saw it, wow, yeah, you you didn't see it, you. So I worry about that, so the idea that you, you know, have this issue in first period, you're like, I don't know what it is. I'm not gonna go in and say, it must be this or must be that, I'm gonna just look and see what's going on, that that's how you should handle.
We also try things and then look at the data, right? Because behavioral interventions, which much as we know, this is science, it's it's helpful art, it's like, oh, this is what, this is what it seems to be. But when that data says, no, that's not, that's your, your interventions aren't being effective, well, then we need to look at different interventions. So we had to get there, it wasn't like, oh, it's the buses.
Right.
Right?
But again, I'm not dismissing PBIS, I'm just saying, let's make sure we're not playing the flag hat with they don't.
And you just said it's very complicated, I I actually think, I'm gonna say the opposite, there's also some very simple things that have anecdotal evidence that is. Um, you know, we didn't have any consistency in expectations previously. You you were a second grade teacher and your procedures and your expectations for your students were, it'd be night and day for the person next door. And then they go on to the next grade level, they're work consistent, and you know, was a huge problem when LGN and JCS would come together and work with the yell. We spend a lot less time having to review some of these things, because we're teaching children what the expectations are. We always say, they can't do it if they don't know how. And so we're teaching them how to act and how to walk and how to be a student. And that's really powerful too, so that's anecdotal. Anything else? You're just an easy question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying so late, yeah, appreciate it. Alright, so next steps.
We're really gonna be short on.
She is running up there, she likes that.
I just. Just with a thank you, um for coming to you tonight, and I know, like, we talk about process a lot. We've been at this for eighteen months. Jen started this work along with Gia and along with all of our elementary school teachers, our curriculum council and our field class teachers. The volume of work that has gone to this and the level of detail that's been provided is um up here. The level of conversation, collaboration, communication, I just want to make sure that the public understands how much time and effort everybody has put in to bring us here tonight. So just a really public acknowledgement and thank you to everybody for this, okay? Thanks. So just to give a a a little bit of background. So just to give a, a, a little bit of background, um, our last, uh, adoption was, I believe, in two thousand sixteen. Um, fourteen wisdom. And in twenty seventeen, the elementary frameworks had changed. And really, what folks were looking for was what they called an evidence-based literacy program. So previously, any vendor, any publisher could slap on a textbook, Massachusetts state approved, Common Core state standard state approved. But it was a meaningless designation because there was no funding source. So there are two sites, one is called Ed Reports, the other is called Curie, that really do a deep dive. And they are the consumable reports, so to speak, for instructional materials. And really, what they require are complexity of text, rigor. Representation of cultures and different cultures and perspectives, engagement. Making sure that our screening assessments make sense. And a connection to the I M T S S process. And I just wanna diverge for one moment. So all the work that we've done from PBIS to this work here, to our conversation about budget. Educationally speaking, it circles back to that layering of sport, you know, that triangle, and then, in the case of PBIS, the graph. You know, the elongated rectangle, but that's what it all circled back to. And in our, uh, effort, we really were looking for what we call those high-quality evidence base. And in fact, part of the council's non-negotiables were, if it didn't meet the all green, which is the highest standard on every place. We didn't even review it for consideration. And so there are really four phases, and this, again, began about eighteen months ago. The learn and prepare phase, the investigate and select, and where we are now. Which is what we hope of, of, for having a positive response from, from the school committee this evening. To really move i- i- into the launch phase. And these phases have involved a lot of time, a lot of effort, researching the texts. Making sure that we had vendors coming and talking about what the texts were. Doing teacher book walkthroughs and actually using rubrics scoring. And I want folks to just understand that this was primarily a teacher-led process. So teachers who informed the kids every day, who understand the nuances of what it takes, really drove the process. And so I'll turn it over to Gia to talk a little bit about the vision.
So the ELA council that came together, we had representation from each grade level, from each school. Plus our special ed teachers and some leading specialists. And they came up with this vision that really is our why, about why we do this. And it's, I think, everything that we've been talking about tonight and our students, I think I really could agree on that. And so this vision captures our why and what we want for our students. And that would be to build a strong foundation and, um, support all learners. And to make sure that this new program is engaging for them and that they want to learn. And they develop a lifelong love of learning and reading and writing. And that it is high quality and, and, um, engaging for all students. And so this was our vision that was developed from the council.
Oh. I'm gonna get the.
Running a battering.
So these were the parameters, which are the non-negotiables. Um, and that we wanted this to meet the high-quality markers of having that text complexity and the depth of knowledge. Um, differentiated resources for intervention, our EL students. Must be a rigorous curriculum that's aligned with our state frameworks. That it's within our budget, um, that it was a two thousand nineteen or later addition, we didn't wanna go any earlier than that. And that had both paper and digital components, those were our non-negotiables. Our priorities were that it was student-centered and engaging, quality and diverse literature, incorporate reading and writing together. Lessons included embedded scaffolding, uh, built in, in the form of assessment tools. Uh, tools to bridge home and school connections, aligned with our district needs and priorities. Teaching and student user-friendly workshop model, which is our, you know, going into small group and center work that it supported that. And that it would make those authentic, real connections for students.
Thanks. Student-centered, engaging, why would that not be must-have?
Well, it, it is a must-have, it was, I think it was part of our, um, priorities and parameters as well, but it's definitely a priority, that's why it's on here. The parameters are more like, uh, that it has to be within the budget, it has to be, you know, these are.
The standards of all. You don't even notice something if it doesn't.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
I'll say it's a positive card. And I ta- touched upon this just briefly before. But really, what we're looking for is all of the markers that Gia talked about, but also with a solid and comparable base. Which means that it was reviewed by teachers and administrators and shown to be of high quality in all throughout those areas. Particularly for us, it was really about that foundational knowledge and skills. The text had to be complex and rich and clear. And from the lens of our teachers, because part of our experience, the teachers did a field test of both products. For between five and six weeks. So that alignment with our standards and then the usability feature, so that if you swap product A and product B. Had a similar experience with both over a period of time, you could make the comparison because you field tested both. And that was really important for us, to make sure that the decision was made so that everybody had equal footing with, with both products. And so we chose between two programs, one was called Inter Reading, the other was called My View. And this was after a process where we looked at other vendors as well, even for just the books. But we chose because you can only field test two through a curriculum council vote, to go into reading and my view. We wanted to make sure that from a planning perspective, that we shared and followed the pacing. And we had regular meetings of the council, we aligned, teachers created Google Docs, shared back and forth, positives and negatives all throughout the process. And then to make sure that students have the ability to utilize assessments. And make sure that the program had all the right components. So the student book assessments, and that these were used with fidelity. So that if Gia is teaching grade three at JCS, I was teaching grade three at LGN. We had regular conversations about, what did this look like? How do our kids interact with it? You know, what are our thoughts in terms of how, how it all worked out? And so our recommendation, this was after a, um, curriculum council vote. Um, after about an hour and a half discussion, is Inter Reading and the publisher is, uh, open, therefore. As an aside, it's a little bit less expensive too, so that, that may help. So I guess my question, Lee, and I know this whole curriculum council. I think it's, how did it work if, say, you have fourteen people and it's like seven versus seven, like, how? How do we come to a consensus on that? So on, on decision day, we had shared a process with the team. Very specifically upfront, because to, to your point, we had to be really detailed. So the first component was, we would spend fifteen minutes talking about the strengths of Inter Reading. Excuse, yes, because that was the first book that we field tested, then it was fifteen minutes of My View. We wanted to make sure that we separated it out, and then there was an ability for the curriculum council people to go back and forth. So one of the themes that really emerged in that conversation was that. The inter-reading component with those foundational reading skills K to two, which is really the ages where kids are learning to read. Where it's great to read kind of for our kids than reading to learn. The K to two folks were super passionate that the inter-reading component is deeper, it was richer, it was more clear, it was more robust. So that was really a lot. And so in the rubrics that we scored, and our teachers were amazing, some of the rubrics, I kid you not, they were twenty pages. With a level of detail. And so it was a solid majority for Inter Reading, I wouldn't call it, you know, it was not unanimous. And My View certainly has some strong features. Um, what we've already done as a council, um, we're organizing a group. To look at the inter-reading points that were identified for areas of improvement. To meet with the folks from Inter Reading, so we can have that conversation about, we field tested this, here's what we liked. But as we launch, we need your support with this. Because we wanna be proactive in addressing teacher concerns upfront. Mind you, these are minor concerns, they're not significant. But our role in this process is to get everybody as prepared as possible. So that when we enter, we enter with a lot of positive momentum.
I'm curious on the cla- the classrooms that trialed out, like each program, um. What? Like, do they, are they continuing with Inter Reading, with like the, the books that they had, or, like, my son was in one of them, so I got the My View book home. Um, but I'm just like, and then, then is there a setback because there was a small amount of time, you know, like, I.
I do, that's, it's a great question, so here's our, here's our plan. I was a little bit presumptive, and I jumped the shark, so to speak, because I did ask the, the folks from Inter Reading. To send us the rest of the year's materials from field test teachers, so that students that had that experience could continue. They've agreed to do so at no cost. Um, I feel by the rules, it's within your purview to approve first. And they haven't gotten here yet, but I wanted to make sure, forming a positive vote that we were ready to position teachers for that.
Thanks, guys. Many teachers asked that too, yeah, well, yeah, I'm just.
About, about three thirty. Three thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand. My business. I had a whole mountain of curriculum still. But this is a question I always ask with any curriculum. What was the separating factor of Inter Reading over My View? What is the one thing that was kind of like, this is what's doing it? And then what was the one con, if you will, of what, why was My View that close to possibly being our next curriculum? Okay, thanks. I think, I think the one indicator was when you were way out. The level of detail, precision, and, um. Quality of materials and ease of instruction with the foundational literacy skills in K to two. That was a really strong marker, because the difference there was, I think, was noticeable. Between, and the folks at K to two were really clear about that. Some of the folks in the four, five strata felt like the My View component was a little bit, um. More streamlined and straightforward for the older students. But there wasn't a significant disparity, but it was enough that we noticed the trend. But even, again, like, to address that point. We went back to the vendor and I said, to Cindy, I said, we wanna be able to sit down with you. And just kind of unpack a couple of the, the areas to optimization before we get started. And then I guess, what does My View do better than Inter Reading that we're gonna hopefully talk to Cindy and figure that one out? I think the, 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 the component, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gia, was, I think, timing and pacing. With the older students with Inter Reading need some tweaks. Whether it's done from the vendor elbow or whether we decide to do, do it on our own. I think the timing will, will need to calibrate that to our norms here. I apologize, I missed this, this is grant funded.
So we have applied for a grant through the Department of Education for our high-quality instructional materials. Um, Dr. Ackerman applied for it probably in October, um, and we are still waiting to track them. Um, we also put, um, fifty percent of it towards as part capital, which will be a grant or MTC. And it's also part of our, our budget as well, so it's, um, more realistic that it's so.
So my first question is, is the grant covering, if we got the grant, would it cover like, you know, part of it?
It would cover fifty percent. Um, and so one of the things that we've done in the past has entered into a multi-year payment. With, um, publishing companies, which has been very, you know, they want their, they want their money, right? So, and they want you to pick their programs, so they're just willing to work with you. Um, up to, up through three years.
Okay.
So we could potentially, you know, say, okay, we can give you the fifty percent by advocate because it's grant-funded. Could we work with you to pay the other fifty percent over the three years?
So, and we have, uh, a capital request, which.
Yes.
I.
I don't know.
Okay.
We had.
Do we have an expectation up here?
Yeah, so last year, we actually received the grant around mid-March, that's how we paid for, um, the ELA program here at Norton Middle School, the MAP program here at Norton Middle School. Um, so we're hopeful that we'll hear from them sooner rather than later, um.
And you said that right now we have one hundred and fifty of this in our current budget?
We have one hundred and sixty-five currently in our current budget, um. Again, as, you know, conversations we've had earlier today, we're like, have to have those conversations.
So, I mean, I hate to say this, but I don't, I don't, this is a tough one for me right now, but honestly.
And, and so what I would say is, um. I think it's important for the group to look at the program itself and say, you know, if, 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 if the funding is there, are we willing, able to. Move this program forward, and then we have to take a look and see, okay. We did get the grant, we were able to get it for, you know, whatever that cost was, so we have that first initial payment. Is there a way for us to do overtime? What's our current program?
We have a, we, a few different pieces, so we have, uh, Lucy Clark in units of study. And then we use foundations and Hagrid for phonics. Okay, Lucy Clark, like. I'm wrong, I'm a reading specialist, but there's a lot of controversy around Lucy Clark.
So right now, we're in the middle of the readings. Again, right, so reading laws are back, uh, there's a lot of conversation about whole literature, are we teaching children, you know, from this perspective? Or are we teaching children, um, you know, phonics first? And, you know, what we've always done is we have always supplemented Lucy Clark, it's not purchased for Norton as a, the be-all and-all, we've always supplemented. Supplemented with foundations, and I would think there too. I think one of the most important things about a new curriculum is the consistency of core instruction for teachers. Um, this, and, uh, please interject, um, that this program is much more structured. For teachers, the, the resources that are available are all in one place, they don't have to go looking for other things. Um, and so, you know, we're talking about the lack of interventionists or the lack of other support positions. We're going to need to make sure that the core instruction is, is strong.
And we, we had discussed earlier the, the whole idea that we need to be proactive because our budget's regular and specialized. And part, really, that tier one component is catching kids before they get referred to special education. So ensuring you have an evidence-based program that's taught universally in the same way for all students starting in grade K. I think would really go a long way to satisfying all of those, all of those ends.
And was there any feedback or thoughts on, like, obviously, we're talking about kids who were. Either born during the pandemic or are, you know, had remote learning during the pandemic, so. Obviously, there were gaps that need to be filled, and did the teachers feel like this program was able to fill in those gaps and then help to meet. You know, great expectations and standards?
They, they did, and Gia can, like, we have, and again, we will have to go through the slides, but there was, the teachers had very specific comments. And very pinpointed feedback about why this was such a win for us.
And my own personal opinions on Lucy Clark, so.
And I think one of the other areas that. Always looked to do since, back on to school committee anyway, was the reading percentage of what our students are reading. I remember Jill was saying at one point, it might be ninety percent, and we were well below fifty percent. So, I mean.
I don't know where it's asking you about that yet.
Um, so, I mean, I think doing something that's gonna hopefully help our teachers and turn, help our students is smart. We would talk about the money, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the economy, obviously. We have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in this year's budget.
In the upcoming budget, which, now that we have the information that changed already.
Oh, we, are we gonna have any savings this year?
No savings this year. Um, well, we're at. I think there's just too many unknowns right now.
Yeah, I have a hard time knowing, I have a snap that I know. And we've got a problem, so I'm gonna also.
And, and we don't, the problem is, I don't want to also. For, for golden handcuff ourselves, that now we don't do it, we wait too long, we can't ever again, and now we have our kids setback. Doing Lucy Cawkins for two months and then we're trying to like, I don't know.
How much time do we have? We need an answer.
I can, I can certainly, I can certainly work with the vendor. Um, you know, I've been, we said, Gary, if you're, if you're gonna give them three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, they'll give you time. And I've, you know, I've, I've, I've been very honest all the way through the process, kind of explaining what it is, even going back. You know, to, to, to change, I'm talking about multi-year payment plans because. Even with the, you know, without the new information we received tonight. There are ways to this, so we can, so we could. If there's a need to kind of create the space, you know, even perhaps there could be. You know, an ask for an approval of the program itself and the funding availability.
Yeah, it seems like it's the reason.
As least table this discussion to see if we get grant funding to happen. Because if we, if the grant funding says no, we sure as heck cannot come up with three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I would be more apt to say, maybe we could come up with three years at, you know, whatever, forty thousand, whatever, whatever. I don't, I don't, so, I, I mean, not that we can't this year, but I mean, if we're not getting half in a grant, then I, I'm hesitant.
So what we could potentially do is say that, you know. We, you vote to approve the program as the next curriculum for elementary E L A. And they put it.
I think that's super big.
Or like, I mean, I, I think for them to, you know, there's so much work that's gone into this.
Yeah, I hear you, but, but this is, but Jen, this is the thing, right, like, so, and. I, I'm, I'm super appreciative of the work and it's not that I don't want to have this program, but. We need to make very, very hard decisions right now. And three hundred and thirty thousand, it's a, a third of a million dollars that we're talking about here, you know, it. We have to consider the possibility that, that, that may be teaching positions, teaching positions that we need. Okay, I get it, this might be super beneficial to kids. But it's not a, it's not a teacher. I mean, that's, so this is not like, this is not a, you know, condemnation of any of the work that you've done, I appreciate it and. And in a vacuum, I would, I would vote to approve this right now, but. I mean, right, there's a responsibility to this town, I, I think we have to look at, say, we, we at least need to know what the funding is. Before we can vote on this. And, and I get like, you know, I get there's like, you know, uh, we think there's a time pressure, but we can't. It's a third of a million dollars, they'll wait, trust me. Old enough, we'll be happy to take our money when we're ready to give it to them. So I, 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 I urge people to at least think about tabling this, otherwise, I don't think it's a hassle. Quick math here, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars by basically what we were. Whatever teacher was, we were like sixty-nine thousand, we're looking at, that's four point seven teachers or additional staffing. That we'd have to be looking at cutting in addition to A of twenty-eight in or forty-four. Right, right, because only whatever, a hundred and sixty-eight of it is in our budget now, we say, yeah, we don't, we can't do some kind of extended funding. Now the balance of that was the next year's budget too. I, this is, this is not a table, like, it has to be, this is probably a bad question to ask right now, but where my brain went. How, how are we saying, keep up something twelve percent of the level of services? You gotta be sure of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year curriculum?
So, like that we, we, yes, all, yeah. There's nothing after that. So it's, it's, you know.
We're getting rid of the old curriculum, we're bringing in new.
The other thing to think about too is there are consumable products that go more than any. Curriculum, so every year we buy new foundations materials for students, we buy, um, integrity materials. So when you take a look at what those costs were, it's not an additional hundred and sixty-five that we added to the budget, it might be an extra thirty. When you really look at what the costs were.
Cause your, your expenses go down on the current.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm personally, I think we should vote on it with a condition of something. Because if we do get halfway in a grant, we do get something from capital, whatever that may be. We might be looking at nothing and then nothing cost to us, if you will, or zero cost to us. That we can then go and dig that bell, head, go order that now, we're good to go. Rather than if all of a sudden we're stuck here, we haven't voted. We get from capital in April first, we hear from the grant in May eighth, well, we don't have another meeting for two weeks in or fifteen later.
I guess what's, what's the turnaround now for this, like if we, if we table this till say. End of people meeting, whatever that may be, we should have the grant, we should have some idea about capital. Is that still enough time patiently, what's the turnaround?
It would, it would change the curve, so it's certainly doable, so I want to start by saying that, either pathway is doable. In the most optimal position, we'd be able to order sooner. We have the materials in and then offer the first round of professional development prior to the end of this year. So that we could give all of the teachers the manuals before they left. Have the materials here ready to go and then offer the teachers over the summer that opening round of P D. Now, if that's not possible. Those other dominoes would fall into place, they just would fall into place a little bit later.
Correct, which is going to essentially set back whatever September, October, November is essentially wants to look like to pushing everything back. It's not Melo Golo, we could, we could figure out a way. Cause we would never want, we would never have our educators enter a space of the new curriculum unprepared. If it came down to waiting till April, we'll figure it out. We will figure out a way to make sure the teachers get what they need, we'll figure out a way to get the professional development so they at least have a taste. Prior to implementation and then to the P D, opening P D day for next year. That will be the day for our K to two folks.
I think we'll have more information in two weeks' time now, I mean, we're looking at a joint meeting next week. I think if we just push this to the, to the next March meeting, I don't think we need a month, but I, I think like after the trauma of today. I think we need to just take a breath, I mean, listen, I so appreciate all, I mean, I've known Gia forever, I appreciate all that everyone has done. But this is one of those hard decisions that we are now, and I, I just think to spend three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we have no idea. After what we were just told today, we, we are, I, 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 I just.
I, I get the right, I'll, I'll decide on that.
I know, I absolutely want to say a hundred percent yes, it makes total sense to do this. But just again, after today, I just don't know how we can do that without knowing how we're going to pay for this.
So what we can do is we can stop and if, if we have an update. From the grant side of things or the town side of things or the twenty eighth, um, we can come back. Um, I don't know if you would want them to do their presentation again.
No, no.
And we can, we can make that decision, if we do not have that information, we have a meeting on April eleventh. So, um, which is before the break and we can, we can learn that time, so, um. I want you guys to be sure that you're feeling comfortable, I, I know, um, I did say to Dr. Ackerman earlier, it really makes you really mad. And then go present this, you know, like for a long time, um, after our budget hearing, I knew David should put it first, but like. Um, I did say that to him earlier, so, and I, I do believe that there are definite options. Um, for us in terms of working with publishing company, um.
So maybe, maybe we table it for at least two weeks, you kind of go on your end and see what the options are. We'll try to work on our end to see what is gonna happen with us, with capital, I, I mean, I don't even know how this trickles down to that.
And I mean, how are they gonna do that, right?
I don't know, but I just think we need more information, I think we need more information about the budget. I mean, if you guys would have come to the last meeting, this would have been a no brainer, right? And then we would have been, you know, struggling right now saying how we're gonna do this, but, but. Just I, I think with what we just found out today, we just have to pause and just take a break and get some more information.
I know, just appreciated the opportunity, you know, just be a good person and just, you know, again, just. The work that's gone in, and, and again, my hope is this becomes an exercise in delayed gratification for all of us. Because the level of work and detail that's going into it has been just aw- awesome and I just want to say. Again, publicly just thanking everybody for, you know, everything that's gone into it.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we appreciate the work, please do not be per se, this is a, no, we disagree with you, we like the board or whatever. I love it, I, I, I wish we could do it, I wish, I wish we had infinite money, we don't. This, this just couldn't be a worse year and a worse day of the year.
We definitely get the bad, the ultimate bad timing award.
You know.
I just, I do want to say in, in defense of this work in this program and having a new program, it is critical. I just want you to know how critical it is to have something that is up to date, something that's neat, that's meeting, that's these guidelines. Um, right now, I think it's, it's a struggle to meet those guidelines, so I do want you to know how critical it is.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that, I, I, I totally hear what you're saying, I just.
Especially with the cuts.
Yeah, and, and that's the problem, right, this is, we're cutting critical things, this is exactly. If we're cutting teachers to implement a new curriculum, we gotta have steps. And the reality of some of the created, not, I mean, not that we're cutting all, like.
The program is to create a strong core, so a strong tier one. And so without tier two support, you're gonna need a strong tier one.
Yeah, I mean, it totally makes sense. Yeah, this is, this is the dilemma that we're gonna have now, right, we're, we're picking and choosing. Absolutely terrible. All right, let's just take, if we can table it for two weeks, let's just come back. You guys don't have to present, we already know all the good stuff, like we're, we're good, let's just see if we can gather some more information. Take a break from today and, and come back.
And I'll, I'll, I will do a deeper dive as well, I'll circle back to the vendor and try to talk through. What we've talked through and, um, see what the next step is.
Yeah, just different scenarios to go down there and to work with us.
Maybe if you tell them what's going on, maybe they say, hey, you know what, we can extend it over five years. We can give you a, you know, we can give it to you for drawing side, okay, whatever.
Because I've said I, you know, it just in the process, I've been very open with them. From the very beginning about what it is and what isn't to the whole piece, so. I'll certainly take our information back and, and, and update them and, um, we'll see where that goes.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have anything on the other?
Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that next Friday, the twentieth, is the Norton Community Steam Show at Norton Middle School. Um, it's a great opportunity, um, not just for students and families, but for community, come in and see some of the great things that we're doing. Um, at Norton, and Norton, um, and they'll have other, um, local, um, community representatives as well. I just have one thing as well, just want to mention that the, uh, It Takes a Community Basketball Game. Is gonna be held on Friday, May third at the high school at seven P M. Um, for those that don't know, this is a charity basketball game where teachers play against, um, police officers. And we spread wins on, um, basketball players or with some high school kids. And, um, all funds go to all profits made, go to families, um, who have unfortunately suffered a loss of a, a child or a parent in town. Um, or, uh, have a, a pretty serious illness or, uh, financial hardship. Uh, it's been a great event, we've hosted at the school for a lot of years. I know they're looking for, um, and things will be coming out on social media and through the schools, but they'll be looking for donations for concession items. Um, there's they sell, uh, waters and drinks and snacks and stuff for the kids, um, there's gonna be the boom and artists back again. And, um, players of course needed and sponsors, anyone looking to sponsor can reach out to ITech, NortonMitsche.com. So I have, so, thank you.
Can I just say, from my perspective and what I do, like if I'm saying in support. I think has been there for so many of our families there. Um, I, I don't even know what we would do, so many of these difficult cases are looking for I think, so. I've never had this kind of support in. For almost thirty years that I've done this work, uh, from a community organization around the kinds of cases that we deal with, so. Um, there's a lot of families out there that I, I don't know where they're due though, so.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, probably, so this next meeting, this one, this, what day?
Um, they would like to know if we are able to meet with them on Thursday, March twenty-first.
Time six? Yeah, if we can get that confirmed by.
So, some board is all separated, but they're just waiting to see if we are able to do that.
Can I make a suggestion to this, and then we always do, we do a joint meeting and just do it with a smart one, to be happy with my friend John.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't want them there?
I just, I just feel like there's too many comes and goes, everyone just kind of stares at each other.
Well, I mean, they're not, they're definitely not.
The meetings and joint, the joint meeting itself.
The reason why we started doing the call three boards is because if two of us met, it was. We weren't hearing things, but then the third wasn't, so the reason why we started doing joint meetings at the beginning was that everybody was on the same page about. Situations, right, so that's, that's why we started doing that, so I'm almost, especially with two pin club members who are here tonight, I'm almost nervous to not invite them. Because, like, they're gonna be making decisions as well, right, so.
Yeah, I, I think if you don't, I think you would have mattered to have a second meeting to a P D.
That's just, yeah, it's just, you know, sharing information and just making sure everybody's on the same page and nobody's hearing something hearsay or whatever.
I, I think if it's, especially if it's going to be about the budget, I think. Admit it, well, yeah. A horrible thing to accomplish.
If next Thursday's the date, I, I mean, I have something, I'll just change it. You guys all make it on Thursday?
What's the twenty?
Twenty first. Just crazy.
I'm pretty sure I'm.
I'm grateful.
Dan? Justin?
Um, I, I believe so, I just have to check on.
Okay, so at least three of us.
And, and, and I'm sure that's gonna be, cause it's gonna start with seven, it's a meeting about another way to them. And I think this is, I think this is for my, I think given what we found out today and hopefully in two weeks from now, we need it. I think at some point, we need to kind of, when you can need and look through. Look through options again.
Absolutely.
I mean, there were some, you know, borderline crippling decisions that we did not make, or we may have to.
Yeah.
Figure out.
And, and I think our team needs. A couple of days or a week or two, just to kind of sit down and, and give you by some options.
And you gotta look at that, you gotta look at the numbers and say, okay, you know. Now, now we have, I think, probably, um, you know, focus, like, it's not realistic, but now we have maybe, maybe a more realistic idea of. Will it be, you know, what was? One percent, what is twenty-five, six, nine, zero, and a cut, like what it was look like and we can start figuring that out. So, I think again, there's gonna be a ton of really hard decisions to make. And we gotta start looking for it now.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think we necessarily need to throw, throw away, you know, the blueprint.
No, no, that's a starting, you know, we're starting from there, right, we're starting from there, I, I mean, I hate, I, I hate to say this. But what we were like, this is what we would, I think that's a clear conclusion, but those are a lot, I mean, there's, there's. They're looking back to that, right, so, um, and I'm sorry, this probably should, I should already talked about some of the, the bunch of discussion, but. And, and so I sort of go back to like when you, you know, the little pink slips and we had it early, a lot of it later. I think in, in the past, you may say, okay, well, June would make some sense because oftentimes we can call people back. I think we, we could fairly safely say that, that first fifteen to twenty are not getting called back. In any scenario and probably, probably a lot more, but at least give them time to start looking and, and find something else somewhere. Because to Zach's point, if they don't, now, now it's doubly damaging the town, you know, our education's suffering and we're gonna get with a financial burden. So.
Hey, anything else? I'm ready for a drink, but it's late.
You know, when they add their, when they do their thing, the, um, the, where the valuation was, I saw, oh, I can see it's my team. It's my team, that's right.